Folks, we are live.
All right, Scott, you got everything else set up?
Yes, sir, we're good to go. We are waiting for a couple of folks. They're down the agenda, but I'm keeping an eye on it. So as they come in.
Very good. All right, we will get rolling. Welcome everyone to tonight's meeting in the Burlington City Council. Today is Tuesday, May 18th, 2021. I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting, which is again being held via the Zoom platform due to the continuing coronavirus pandemic. It is also being livestreamed on the City of Burlington's YouTube page at youtube.com/cobnc. Please note this meeting is being recorded. For tonight's public comments and the public hearings to address council during the appropriate time of the meeting, please indicate that you wish to do so using the raise hand feature in your Zoom window or star nine if you're joining us via phone. That will let our staff know that you wish to speak and they will call on you at the appropriate time. If you are having any technical or connection difficulties this evening, John Vernon is standing by to help. His number is 336-513-5440. As a preliminary matter, I am Mayor Ian Balchoudas, and I'd like to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on this agenda are present and can hear me. Members present when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mayor Protem Cathy Hikes.
Here.
City Councilmember Jim Butler.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Harold Owen.
Here.
Staff participants and presenters, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. City Manager Harden Watkins.
Here.
City Attorney David Huffman.
Here.
interim City Clerk Beverly Smith.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Nolan Kirkman.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Rachel Kelly.
Here.
Director of Planning and Transportation Mike Nun.
Here.
Water Resources Director Bob Patterson.
Here.
Director of Finance and Risk Management Peggy Reese.
Here.
Chief Jeff Smythe.
Present.
Assistant Police Chief Brian Long.
Here.
Assistant Police Chief Chris Gaddis.
Here.
Community Engagement Manager Morgan Lassiter.
Here.
Economic Development Director Peter Bishop.
Yes, sir. Good evening.
Planning Manager Conrad Omeato.
Here.
Recreation Special Event Supervisor Emily Crowley.
Here.
Lead for NC Fellow Louisa Stoller.
Yeah.
Very good. For tonight's invocation, we will call on Mayor Protem Cathy Hikes.
Let us begin by taking a deep breath, everybody. Lord, we find ourselves in a time of transition. We are grateful for the greening and flowering that has advanced so rapidly and beautifully this spring. It is a welcome change after months and months of caution and worry to protect ourselves and others from the coronavirus in our midst. We are slowly getting vaccinated, venturing out, and lowering our masks. It is also a time of transition for people we know and admire. We ask your blessing on them as they pursue other paths, other opportunities, and we ask for your help in our search to find those who will take their place among us. We feel an energy in our state and county that will affect our city in months and years to come. Guide us as we make decisions to maneuver through a changing landscape. Bless our citizens in their life and work, especially the hungry and the homeless. Bless our employees and our council as we work towards the vision of a world we would like to see. We ask all these things with humility and awe. Amen.
We have a special recognition this evening regarding our retiring Chief of Police Jeff Smythe. This time I'll recognize our City Manager Harden Watkins.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. It's my pleasure this evening to say some nice words about Chief Smythe as he moves towards his retirement date of May 27th. And I've asked some folks to join me this evening in sharing a few remarks, and I'll make some remarks and then yield the floor to them. And then, Mayor, yield back to you if you or council members would like to say a few things as well. So let me start off. So I think council members are certainly aware Chief Smythe is retiring after eight years of service, a little over eight years of service to the city. He came here in 2013, accepting the office, the offer from then-City Manager Harold Owen, and relocated here to Burlington from Cholo, Arizona. Here at the city, I think everyone knows this, but Chief has been responsible for all our police department functions, 139 officers, 41 professional staff. We have a dispatch center, a SWAT team, and we lead the countywide drug task force. He's also served as Calea Commissioner since 2017, defining and certifying and setting the national standards for professional policing in our country and also North America and Canada and Mexico. He, I think folks know a lot of things I'm going to share, but I did want to mention all these things. He's provided some amazing leadership for us and had some creative approaches to implement community programs to combat drug abuse and mental health challenges in our community. He's worked to improve collaboration with underrepresented members of the community, including helping get the Faith Action ID Card Program moving in the Latinx community. He put together a community response team of trusted African-American leaders that was geared towards violence reduction in our community. And he's also worked really hard to get robust implicit bias and racial equity training throughout the police department. I think council members are aware of this as well, but our department is known for its implementation of some rigorous scenario-based training and de-escalation training, reducing use of force over time. And obviously, we saw the value of that over the last year and a half as other communities have scrambled to try to get that training in place. It's something we've been doing for quite some time. And then finally, I think what I'd like to note about Chief is he's worked, when he arrived, he worked to streamline the hiring process for the department, expand the candidate pool, for folks that would be interested in working here, and make some noticeable changes to the department's employee diversity. And force each day looks a little bit more like the community which they serve, and that is much appreciated. Let me talk about a few awards, both awards to the Chief and to the department. In May 2015, something I know he's very proud of, received an award from the NAACP, the President's Award for Community Relations, and that was some collaborative efforts to unify the police and community after the civil unrest at that time was centered in Ferguson, Missouri. In 2017, our police department was recognized by the Bureau of Justice Assistance with National Federal Based Organization with the Valor Award for Comprehensive Officer Safety and Wellness, and we were the top agency in the nation. And again, the previous winner of that, 2016, was the New York Police Department. So certainly great company to be keeping in terms of your investment in your staff and your team. Chief is also really, really proud. He was recently named to Governor Cooper's Task Force for Racial Equity and Criminal Justice. That began in 2020. I believe he's going to continue to serve and be working with Attorney General Josh Stein on some of those efforts. So things that have been involved, Chief Smythe's been involved with locally. He's a member of the JCPC, which is the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council here in Alamance County. He's served on the Justice Advisory Council for the last four years, currently serving as co-chair. He's been involved in the Alamance Partnership for Children, trying to recognize the importance of needs of young children in our community. He's also been an active member of the Rotary Club. Other professional organizations, he's a member of the North County Association of Chiefs of Police and is on the executive leadership team there. He's been involved with the SBI's Center for Reduction of Law Enforcement Use of Force. He's working with the Office of National Drug Control Policy on their high-intensity drug trafficking programs that they're working on, serving on that board, and also with the Law Enforcement Information Exchange Initiative here in the Carolinas. So, very, very impressive list, but let me just make a couple of remarks and then I'll quickly yield to Assistant Chief Brian Long. But as you all know, Chief Smythe has been a valuable leader and a major contributor to improving quality life here in our community, to the state of North Carolina. And then, as I just shared, he's made an impact across our nation as well, helping set the standards for professional policing. I know everyone here this evening will join me, and thanking Jeff for his outstanding and lasting and dedicated service to the city. We wish him all the best as he moves forward with his next job. So, Mayor, I'd like to introduce Assistant Chief Brian Long.
Manager, Mayor, and Council, appreciate you allowing me to speak for just a moment tonight about the past eight years, having worked for Chief Smythe in various positions in the agency. I picked a couple of areas that I wanted to speak to, the first being community. Chief Smythe was not the type of chief that held closed-door meetings with groups of people. Chief Smythe went into the community on the sidewalks, into the parks, into the street at times, and had conversations, and was able to gain the trust. You know, trust and transparency is the buzzword throughout law enforcement these days. But he actually did that by leading, by going into the communities. I don't really know that there's a better example of how successful he's been in that, other than through this past summer, where instead of hiding in an office or taking phone calls through a cell phone, after the George Floyd incident, he met folks in parks. He encouraged them to have an opportunity to exercise their First Amendment in a peaceful way, non-damaging and peaceful way. But I can tell you, I was a part of those events in a different way, and I truly believe that he led Burlington through a pretty rough time in law enforcement through our community by going into the community, standing with people, listening instead of talking. For that, I applaud him on that effort. The last thing that I'd like to mention is just, it's a little bit more of a personal journey, and he's heard me say this more than one time, but as a young law enforcement officer, I was taught here in Burlington pretty well how to police, how to write a citation, how to make an arrest. Luckily, I caught on to that fairly quickly and could do those tasks. But I would say in his eight years as Chief of Police, he focused this agency, not only myself, but the entire agency, to understand why we do that. What is the impact of a citation going to be? Is it going to have a net impact in a positive way for community? Is it going to impact the person individually in a positive way, maybe and take them in a different direction in their life? So it really came down to expand and airability as a police agency to understand that the actions that we take have tremendous impact, and at certain times certainly arrests and citations are the appropriate direction. But I can tell you now that when we hire people, from the first day that we hire them, we don't teach them how to write a citation. We don't teach them how to make an arrest. That comes later. We first now teach them why, and what's the value, and what's the outcome going to be. So I really do contribute his eight years, at least from my personal perspective and the chair that I've been able to sit in. That has been a huge growth point for this police agency, for me personally. Chief Smythe, I appreciate your service, and congratulate you.
So, Mayor, I'd like to call on Assistant Chief Chris Gaddis.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, Manager Watkins. I appreciate the opportunity to speak, to acknowledge many good things that Chief Smythe has done for us over the last eight years. Like Chief Long, I was a veteran officer when he arrived, didn't know much about him, and I think like any employee, we kind of watched to see what was going on. And what was going on was very quickly, he was positioning us as an agency to do great things. We always joked that he was known around town as the new chief. Wherever we went, he was always known as the new chief. No one really knew his name for a while, but he was the new chief. So, over these last eight years, I think that some of the pillars that he's focused on, as Chief Long mentioned, were community, but some other things. He was always positioning us to do things that we were uncomfortable with and that we were a little tentative with. He was a visionary. He put us in positions with some outstanding training, policies and procedures, and basically an overall culture of excellence. I think that he kind of saw things in us that we may have even not known our abilities. There were times that were tough. There were times that we worked our tails off. But ultimately, at the end of the day, he has set us up in a position that has positioned Burlington as a leader regionally, throughout the state and throughout the country. Many of us collaborate with, you know, network across many different lines. And when we always go, we kind of sit back and listen and take in some of these conversations. But all of us come back and we're going, wow, we are so glad that we work for the City of Burlington, the Burlington Police Department, because we are so far ahead of the curve. I think that a lot of that is due to his positioning and pushing us to move forward. So, Chief, I commend you on a personal and professional level. Thank you so much for everything that you've done for us, for me personally. And I think that maybe your new title should be the Chief of Change. So, congratulations, and I wish you well.
Thanks, Mayor. And if we get Scott Bibler to help turn on a couple of cameras, I'd like to recognize NAACP President Barrett Brown.
So we've got Barrett's camera up.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, and Manager Hart Watkins. I'm very pleased to be able to say a heartfelt thank you to Chief Smythe, who I feel like I kind of grew up in this community with. It's first year, here was my first year as president of the NAACP. And proactive and transparent are things that I can say that we are lucky to have in Burlington, in him. If you look at the Justice Department's workbook on community policing, the Burlington Police Department checks almost every box. I think the only place that could be built up would be beat officers, and I think that is a city council budgetary issue. So, if you could, if the city council could catch up with the police department, we'd appreciate that. The strategic planning sessions that were held all over Burlington was an initiative that included the community in having something to say about how law enforcement planned and took in their concerns, and we appreciate that. I will say, his open-door policy and his proactive nature about getting ahead of stories, I've been able to talk to him about sensitive issues and seek to a resolution where we felt like we were heard. I think one of the problems in Ferguson is that the people in Ferguson didn't feel like they were heard. We had a Black Lives Matter rally. Chief expressed some concerns about the tenor of the rally, and so I went over and talked to him about it and explained to him that we were not suggesting that Black Lives mattered more than other lives, but it seemed that across the country, with rapid rate of Black people being killed at the hands of police officers, that they needed a reminder that Black Lives mattered as much as white lives, and that there was no intent to berate the police. After talking with them and having a meeting with fellow organizers, I will say that I arrived at the march at Ebenezer, and not only was Chief Smythe there, but I looked up in the Hall River Police Chief was coming, and the Meven Police Chief was coming, and the Elon Police Chief was coming, and the Gibson Bill Police Chief was coming. And it was because the chief had been on the phone that morning explaining what our rally was like. And to my knowledge, it is the only Black Lives Matter march where the law enforcement gathered at the podium and marched alongside marches. And we are very grateful to have his example. He was example to law enforcement all across this area and this country, and we are very appreciative of his efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. And Mayor, I'd like to call on Ms. Dewanna Warren Bigelow, who serves as co-chair of the Community Police Advisory Team.
Welcome, Dewanna. I think you may be on mute.
Thank you. Good evening, Councilmember and Councilwoman. I'm glad to be here. It's one of those, I think I've probably been more than saying a lot, because of everything that everybody has said already, just seeing Jeff come inside of Burlington. Someone posted on Facebook, and that really resonated with me. We received Jeff at the right time, the right moment. Those words are exactly how I feel and a lot of residents, especially in East Burlington. Jeff has remained steadfast. A lot of people had gave up hope in a lot of areas where crime was at. Jeff was willing to meet with residents, willing to be on the ground. I feel bad for him several times because after, you know, being on the ground and meeting many residents on several occasions, he would get phone calls, you know, about simple things. I'm pretty sure regular officers could answer. But because of that trust and because of those emails that Jeff gave out and his cards, and they had his phone number, they would call him about the smallest task. But the one thing that the community always says, he answered. You know, he not only answered, there are sometimes he had conversations with community members, and he actually reached out to them first. Over the last year, I know it's been hard for the police department. I've never been this proud of Burlington Police Department ever in my life. Seeing it evolve, having an opportunity, Jeff letting me know and his team just letting me know of different activities that were going on and how to be involved on the police, you know, from that police setting and not just from the community and with our issues. So getting involved through him, opening that gateway and learning more officers, learning more about, you know, how the city is actually run and how the police department, how everything is set up, the program, the community, not the advisory board, but the other one, the training, the community police training, that I had an opportunity to take time and join in on in last year, learning the ranks, learning sergeants. You know, it's one thing for me as a community advocate to be able to say what the concerns of the community is, but also it gave me a chance to know what are the police needs, you know, what are the protocols, what are the things in place that I can take back to the community. You know, there is a two-way street, and Jeff has just made my job is trying to be a liaison between community and police so much easier from simple things such as being on the ground for our back-to-school drive at North Park. We partnered with Mako Bigelow Center in 2017. It was the day before I had to transport like over 700, 800 backpacks from inside of the Mako Center down to that Sotoma building. I happened to get a call from Jeff, just checking to make sure everything was ready for the next day. He asked me what I was doing. I'm transporting these bags, and he said, how many are with you? And I said, it's only two. And I would say in the next 45 minutes, Jeff brought an officer, his wife, they all came out on a Saturday on his day off, and they helped us get those backpacks down to that building to have them readily available the next day for that backpack. I think for that backpack drive, I think his transparency, like everybody has spoken on for so many years, including myself and the people of Burlington, especially people of color, we have always felt like we really our issues and our concerns were not heard, and we never felt like we had a safe place to address those issues. Me knowing that, but being able to witness Jeff build these bonds with people who I know had no interest and trust for police, but now when something comes up, they'll either call him or say, Dewanna, can you reach out to Jeff? I think that speaks volumes. We just seen, you know, so much civil unrest in 2020, and even now in 2021, and we've never heard, I've never heard any complaints when it came to Burlington Police Department. I think the last eight years, the work that Jeff has been willing to do, which is to come outside of those four walls in the police department, talk to his residents, not just people, not just Black people. I've seen many Hispanic people speak so highly of him and thank him for opportunities that they felt like they did not have. But Jeff is also a resource person. When you need to know something, or you want to know how to get it done, Jeff's door is always open for that. I can also attest with Mr. President Barrett Brown from the NAACP. You know, Burlington had the first Black Lives Matter march. Well, it wasn't a march, but it was like a rally. We all met up at North Park, I think it was May the 30th. We met up. Jeff was so infuriated with me. The night before, Mon Holmes said, you know what, we have to do something. This is ridiculous. We're seeing people getting killed on video. You know, what happened to George Floyd was not right. Would you help me do something? I said, yes. I talked to Jeff. It was, I think, the day of, early that morning. He's like, Dewanna, do you know the, you know, the security and are y'all going to be okay? And, you know, what if Antifa show up? I'm just a passionate girl who loves my community. I'm like, who is Antifa? What are you talking about? So he's always had that leadership and just that willingness to know as an officer what's at stake. And a lot of times, we, as organizers, don't know all of that detail. We don't necessarily know why police do the things they do. But long story short, as you guys know, most of you attended that event at North Park. Stage set up, city was there. We had city staff was there. We had judges was there. We had our aldermen there. Everybody came out to stand with the residents of Burlington who were traumatized at that time. We were afraid. We were scared. But guess what? We were not alone. I could say many things about you, Jeff, but it's already been said. I appreciate you. The community appreciates you, and thank you for being one of the good cops in such a time where people do not trust cops, especially brown women like me and brown men like my husband. So thank you for being the difference. You are the hope. You've given me the hope. We have built that trust. I have seen you be accountable, and I just want to thank you. Burlington is better with you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Warren Bigelow. And Mayor and Councilmembers, thank you for this time this evening to share briefly about Chief Smythe. So, Mayor, I'll yield back, and you and the council members may have a few remarks you'd like to make, and then maybe Chief Smythe would like to speak at the end. So, thank you.
Open the floor to our council members, if there's anything you'd like to share with our chief.
Mayor, I'll lead. I'll be brief. Of course, I've gotten to know Jeff over the last eight years, and we talk from time to time. And as you might imagine, from an attorney's perspective, we sort of gauge police chiefs by how many claims are made against the police department. I think he has an unusually remarkable record in that score. And I think maybe David Huffman may be keeping score. But anyway, when you don't have any major claim over eight years, I tell you what, that's nothing short of remarkable. And yeah, I certainly appreciate that, and I'm not going to take a lot of time and repeat what's been said. We really appreciate your service. Thank you very much. I'll just say, job well done.
Other council members?
Mayor, I'll just mention one thing. Obviously, Jeff went through a fairly rigorous process when he interviewed here, but it was something that, before he was ready to fill out on Saturday, we made a decision what we thought we'd go to. And so, it was a pretty, it was, he did a really nice job and made my decision fairly easy, to be quite frank with you. He brought some changes to the department that some people didn't react very well to. They were needed, and we used to talk him through a little bit of patience that our time to implement those changes. And the result is what I think you've heard tonight from citizens talk about the excellence of our department over the past eight years. And Jeff, I'm very appreciative of your time here, and thank you so much.
Jim, Cathy, anything I'd like to share?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that whenever I would see the chief at all kinds of different events, I would ask him how he was, and he would say, excellent. And I gave him a hard time about that until I finally actually decided that it was inspiring, because he asked that excellence of himself and of the police department, and he pretty much modeled what he wanted the world to look like. And that was to be excellent. And so, I'm really grateful that you inspired all of us by your leadership and the way that everyone else has mentioned about being in the community. I was there not nearly as often as you, but you showed up, and it was clear to people that you cared what they had to say and that it mattered what their organizations were doing to make the world a better place. And so I know that whatever you do next, you'll be just as successful, and I know that I personally, and I think our city will greatly miss you.
Jim?
Absolutely. You know, I'm sitting here thinking about all these comments, and, you know, I'll share, the chief and I've had a couple of opportunities to have some very personal conversations and just... to have some very personal conversations and just, I think, form a friendship. We formed a friendship that, Chief, I think will last forever, and I appreciate you for that. There's not many people that serve in the roles that he and I serve in for the community that you can look at and say, you know what, that person changed my life. And I'll share a very personal statement about that, and I've told Chief Smythe this. He changed my view, my perspective, and helped me grow in what policing really was to a community like ours. And I think Dewana just summed it up much better than I can. So, you know, I remember one of the early conversations, Chief, when I went and met with you right after you came on board, and I said, what is it you see that we need? And you said, training, we need training. Our training budget was, was just woeful, you know, at the time, just in comparative to where his vision was that we needed to go. And, gosh, we raised that thing tenfold, if not more, and, and it has shown. Chief Gaddis, he still calls the new chief. I heard somebody the other day say, why is he leaving? He's new. And it's really funny that you're eight years new. So that's really important to know that, that you always had that newness about you. And I think that's special, that's not, that's, that's a very special thing. But the last thing I'll say is that I've learned one thing about, if you go into an organization from a leadership perspective, an organization that has tenure and has longevity and it's got history and it's got its own culture, so to speak, if you try to fix it, you'll break it. And the chief came in and he didn't try to fix it, because if he had tried to fix it, he would have broke it. But he got it moving in a different direction. And when you hear Chief Long talk about that in the mentorship and what he has meant to so many individuals within our community, within the agency, and certainly within the city itself. To Kathy's point, it is inspiring. And Chief, I'm gonna miss you, I love you, and I'm always in your corner, buddy.
Well, Chief, I'll share, I remember going through our first Citizens Police Academy back in 2013. I think that was one of the first times I got to meet you and as a citizen before I served in the elected role as mayor. And I was impressed back then. I learned a lot about what you wanted to do in our community, and I've been proud to see how over the last eight years you've done it and you've done more. There's not a lot of police chiefs that, that work as hard as you do, that are as innovative as you are, and most importantly, that focus on trust at the absolute core of everything you do. Because communities can only change and improve at the speed that you build trust. And so I've, I've been incredibly proud to be a colleague of yours, to stand side by side in the community with you at rallies and events and to help build that relationship with our community. Because cities today are truly defined, positive or negative, by the quality of their police and the quality of the relationship between their police department and their citizens. And I think you've done an outstanding job here. You've made it easy to sleep at night. I feel like our fellow council members may feel the same way, and we, we hope that whoever fills your shoes makes it just as easy for us all to sleep at night, knowing that we have an outstanding department protecting our city. Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, thank you very much. I think it's cliched sometimes to say I'm humbled, but, and I'm not certainly speechless, but I'm just, I'm almost brought to tears, and if the emotions overtake me, I'll swear that my wife's next to me chopping onions for dinner, and that's, that's what the issue is, right? You can't imagine the support that I got from day one, from the staff here, from the council. As Councilman Butler said, Ronnie Wall was the mayor then. And yeah, Jim, absolutely, you all added a zero. I think we were at nine thousand dollars in training money and added a zero to ninety. And then we've grown that to about a hundred and thirty-five, a hundred and forty-five thousand now. And I've always said that training is life insurance, right? Not life insurance for the cops, but life insurance for the citizens, that a well-trained police department saves lives and doesn't put people in jeopardy in the work that they undertake. So I'm extraordinarily proud of what we've done with training, and we've done that as a team, right? An internal team creating a training unit and an external team funding that. It's been absolutely exceptional. You know, candidly, not everything worked out, right? I mean, we had some starts and stops, and I had some bad ideas along the way, and we refined those. And I just hope that at the end of the day, the balance of the equations, that there have been more good things than the things that didn't work. Chief Gaddis is right that, you know, when I got here and throughout much of my tenure, we talked about this new chief, just the chief and old chief, and I kind of really looked at at the old chief kind of despairingly, and I owe a huge apology to the four other old chiefs that we have, right? Glenn, Sheldon, Galton, and Williams are all the old chiefs, right? And now I'm going to be one of them, there'll be five of us that are this little cadre of old chiefs, and all of a sudden it feels more respectful maybe to be the old chief. So I am going to lean into that role of being the old chief, being a perpetual champion for the Burlington Police Department. The women and men in this organization are exceptional. They have stolen my heart forever. Can't, can't change that, won't change that, don't want to change that. They're just absolutely fantastic. And I think maybe Dewana said it, but I do feel like I was called to be here, that my background prepared me extraordinarily well to be successful here, that I've been in the right place at the right time to truly make a difference. My partnership with Barrett Brown, I think, speaks to that. Him as a fledgling president and me as a brand-new police chief to wade through what happened after Ferguson and then to be on the ground post George Floyd with Mon and Dewana and so many others, maintaining safety while we absolutely supported the U.S. Constitution, the right to free speech. We, I, I think have a role model version of what that looks like. And that doesn't come by accident, it comes with intentionality, not my intentionality, the intentionality of our community, of our elected leaders, and again, of the staff in the police department are so willing to give of themselves. In fact, again, this week, we just sent an additional cadre of people to Elizabeth City to help maintain order there. We've shared through mutual aid with Graham and other places, right? And everywhere we go, we seem to step into leadership roles, and that's, that speaks to the caliber of the people that we've hired and trained and maintained. And the two assistant chiefs in Gaddis and Long are exceptional, and they will do such a remarkable job onboarding the new chief, whoever she or he may be. And it's going to be exciting for me to watch that. I'll be excited to see the continued involvement of the CPAC group. That's one of my biggest regrets is that didn't happen sooner, I don't get to impact that group. But they're a fantastic, diverse group, and they're going to bring energy and exciting ideas to the city of Burlington. And so I wish them the best, I wish the city the best. I'm buying a house now in Burlington, finally after eight years, so I'll be a resident and I'll live here for a long time and enjoy all the amenities that are available to us. So for each of you that spoke tonight on my behalf, I'm eternally grateful. I appreciate our individual relationships. Thank you so much. It's been my honor to be the police chief in Burlington for the last eight years.
Thank you, Chief. Zoom applause just doesn't do justice. Manager, anything else you want to add?
So there will be an event to celebrate Jeff's service to the city, May twenty-sixth at two P.M. in the Plaza area and and around the Historic Depot. That's a floating event from, I believe, from two to four P.M. So if folks would like to join and say a few more words and spend a little more time with Chief Smythe, we have that on the docket for the twenty-sixth.
Very good.
And also, if I just could mention to everyone, eight years is a, is a pretty good, pretty good run tenure for police chief. If you look at across the country and especially as you get into larger communities. And I think that says an awful lot for Jeff and his leadership. And frankly, I think it says something about the way he became a part of the community so quickly, which was something we needed very badly at that time.
Very good. With that, continue on with our agenda. We invite everyone to attend retirement ceremony for the chief later this week.
Thank you.
This time I'll recognize our interim city clerk, Beverly Smith.
Empress of council, it is my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda items.
Next is the approval of minutes. We have minutes from our April fifth, two thousand twenty-one work session and our April sixth, two thousand and twenty-one city council meeting. Do I hear a motion and second to approve those minutes?
No move. Second.
Motion to approve from Councilmember Ward, seconded by Councilmember Owen. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise. All those opposed, motion is passed with votes myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes and council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Next is the agenda, adoption of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
Make a motion that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion to adopt the agenda made by Councilmember Butler, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Hikes. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise. All those opposed, motion is passed with votes myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes and council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Next is the consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about them, please let us know. Item A to adopt a resolution authorizing an increase in the micro purchase threshold for federal awards in the current policy to be congruous with state law and authorize the finance director to revise the city of Burlington purchasing policy to reflect the increase. Item B to approve an amendment to the inter-local agreement between the city of Burlington and Guilford County for property tax collection for a three-year extension to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. And item C to authorize the city manager to submit a letter of intent to apply for the Attorney General's Environmental Enhancement Grant Land Acquisition Program for the acquisition of vacant land adjacent to Lake McIntosh for the purpose of preserving water quality, natural habitat, and existing nature trails. Do I hear a motion to approve the foregoing consent agenda?
No move. Second.
Motion to approve made by Councilmember Ward, seconded by Councilmember Owen. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise. All those opposed, motion is passed with votes myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes and council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Next, we begin our public hearings this evening. Item one, a public hearing has been continued to consider an application to rezonate from MDR Medium Density Residential District to CI Conditional Industrial District for the use of a cemetery, the property is located on the north side of Hanford Road and north of Old Coach Road and being a portion of Alamance County Tax Identification Number one three one three zero three. This was continued from our April twentieth, two thousand twenty-one city council meeting. To begin the public hearing, I'm going to recognize our Director of Planning and Transportation, Mike Nun.
I can share my screen.
We've got that screen shared.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a request to rezonate one point three acres of a two point eight three acre tract from medium density to conditional industrial zoning to allow for the use of the cemetery. The property is located on the north side of Hanford, as you can see in the hatch area, just north of Old Coach Trail. The public hearing for this request was originally on the February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one city council meeting, where at the applicant's request, it was continued along with additional continuances at the March fifteenth and April twentieth, twenty-one city council meeting. The following conditions have been offered by the applicant. This is the rezoning site. I'll go ahead and pull up the site plans, since this is a conditional rezoning. Be looking at that. Let me get you familiar with location, just in case you or any one of the public is unfamiliar. This will be Alamance Foods, Kaiser Roth, the interstate area. This is Hanford Road and the site here hatched in blue. Everybody see the next, the next site plan, this is in your packet as well. Just to point out before I start, this gray area is the zoning limit area, what you see sort of hatched, sorry. The front portion. It is just the one point three acres, as I mentioned, that's being asked to be rezoned. The conditions are as follows. One access point to Hanford Road will be allowed for both parcels. It's been a while since our work session, but this, there is a larger parcel here in the back, which makes a total of fifteen point five four acres. And I mention that because that will be a key point on the other conditions as well. So there will be one access, not only for the rezoning site, but for the entire acreage to the back. The applicant is also to certify that proposed use is not subject to any North Carolina Journal statute, statute, chapter sixty-five items related to burial grounds or cemeteries. No traffic or parking shall be allowed out on Hanford Road. All parking, stacking shall be off-road. The area, as I mentioned, is only the one point three acres, which is a reduction from the minimum size required by the UDO of two point five acres. Both parcels, as I mentioned before, are subject to and shall be annexed into the city limits of Burlington. And the required annexation request for these parcels shall be received by the city prior to any issuance of NCDOT driveway permit for the project. The property is in an area of residential uses, vacant land in the large Kaiser Roth, Alamance Foods industrial sites just to the northwest of the rezoning site that I just pointed out. The adopted comprehensive land use plan identifies this area for general industrial uses, which is what you see in purple. The proposed use is a cemetery in the conditional industrial rezoning is inconsistent and not compatible with the comprehensive land use plan. This area has high potential and is identified in the land use plan for general industrial uses, which the rezoning request may have a negative impact on the future development of this area. I've asked Economic Development Director Mr. Peter Bishop to be available if you have any questions about industrial use or industrial land. Proposed development plan for this site has been approved by a technical review committee. However, planning staff considers the proposed zoning to be inconsistent with the land use plan and does not recommend approval of the rezoning. The request also was considered at the January twenty-fifth Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. The request received a vote of three votes for and three votes against on a motion to deny, meaning a tie vote. And due to this, there is no recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. There are also public comments that were provided in your agenda packet as well. I'll be answered to answer any other questions or show me any of the maps. I believe Mr. Lawson Brown and Mr. Moffett is on the call to represent the applicant.
Very good. Council, any questions before Mr. Brown speaks?
Mike, you said at one point that, is it a cemetery that is typically two point five acres?
Yes, ma'am, that's, that's the minimum required of the UDO is two point five, and the request is for the one point three acres.
Any other council questions? All right, Mr. Brown, the floor is now yours.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. It's Mr. Moffett, and my pleasure tonight to be representing the Burlington Masjid Primary Address nineteen oh eight, South Meven Street. In addition to Mr. Moffett here with me tonight, Sahid, the congregational leader is here and would like to speak as well. Chad Huffin of Leeds Group is the engineer, and he's worked diligently and earnestly on this. And of course, we are the Vernon Law Firm at five twenty-two South Lexington Avenue. The subject property is fifteen point five four acres located on Hanford Road across the street from the Blessed Sacrament Catholic Church. More on that later. A single parcel that has been assigned two parcel numbers because a portion is in Burlington corporate limits and the rest is in the city of Burlington. Parcel numbers are one three one, three oh three, and three oh four. The Masjid purchased the property in March twenty twenty from the Wheeler, Joe Wheeler, the former city attorney in Graham's family, for the purposes of constructing a cemetery for the benefit of the Muslim community in Alamance County. A critical, critical factor is that for members of the Islamic faith, their religion dictates that they must be buried in a Muslim cemetery. Alamance County has no Muslim cemetery. And therefore, the Muslim community has had to go to other counties to be buried, such as Guilford, Durham, and Wake, and not in the community that they call their home. The rezoning request is a rezoning of a one point three acre portion of the fifteen point five four acres. Current medium density residential, and this would be conditional industrial for the one point three acres. As to the conditional zoning plan, the plan has received Technical Review Committee approval. And I will discuss the technical review process on this request a little bit later. And I will discuss the technical review process on this request a little bit later. The plan specifications are one point three acre zoning area. This was reduced from the initially proposed four point four acres that started in July of last year. So we've been working on this for almost a year with the city. But the one point three acres is what this city staff recommended and the Masjid agreed. So to this Hikes point, it is less than the two point five acres, but it was staff driven by the city of Burlington. In addition to that, the eleven thousand square foot burial area is all that is being requested. The original plan was for sixteen thousand square feet of land to be for a burial area. The request has been reduced to two hundred burial sites from the original request of three hundred and twenty. The burial area is a condition will be enclosed by a four-foot aluminum picket fence, upgraded from the initial proposal that the church made. A point nine two acre disturbance was reduced from point nine nine. The point two, three acres of impervious surface represented by the plan are a reduction from the point three eight acres. So about a thirty-three to thirty-five percent reduction on all the particular statistics or plan salient points that I have discussed. The dimensional standards are in accordance with heavy industrial district, a forty-foot street setback, fifteen-foot side setbacks, budding medium density residential zoning district and a thirty-foot rear setback. As to the buffering, the conditions in the U D O require type B opaque buffering alongside and rear of the zoning area. Minimum forty feet wide, four canopy, eight under story, thirty-five shrubs at a hundred feet. The street skate buffer along Hanford Road will be in accordance with the U D O, as will the parking area. As to the buffering, I think you need to note from the aerial photograph that staff showed you that this is a heavily wooded lot at the present time, and every effort will be made to preserve as much of that in the buffering plan so that it will not lead to unnecessary cutting of existing vegetation and trees. The development conditions, as highlighted by Mr. Nun, are only one driveway of a point of access from Hanford Road to the entire fifteen point five four acres. And applicant has certified that it's not subject to chapter sixty-five of the general statutes having to do with cemeteries. Three, no spillover traffic will be allowed on Hanford Road. Four, the proposed zoning area will only be one point three acres. And finally, the fifth point, there will be an annexation for the balance of the subject property so to bring it all within the corporate limits of the city of Burlington so that you will not have a donut hole and it would further the annexation plans and growth of the city. In addition to those specific conditions, there are some additional voluntary measures, notwithstanding the applicability of chapter sixty-five of the general statutes that deals with cemeteries. The applicant has developed and adopted policies and procedures for use and maintenance of the proposed cemetery. And you have been provided a copy of that. The applicant will be establishing operations and maintenance trust fund for the proposed cemetery commensurate or equal to the requirements of chapter sixty-five for operation for nonprofit and other public cemeteries. Understand that no other church, to my knowledge, in Alamance County or the city of Burlington has made such a commitment. None of, none of those that I've just mentioned are required as a legal obligation, but the Masjid is certainly undertaking these measures in good faith. As to some anecdotal information about the cemetery itself, the burial plots are not for sale. They are free of charge to those of the Islamic faith. Muslim funerals do not extend to the grave site generally. If any grave site, if there are any grave site attendees, it's generally only family and this is generally discouraged. The burial process is usually about thirty minutes. Any visitation would be managed and arranged through the Masjid that owns the property. Grave markers are flat and no flowers are allowed. I want to talk just a minute or two about the T R C process that we've gone through. This started in July of twenty twenty and staff has finally granted technical approval of the conditional zoning plan, but continues as Mr. Nun indicated to withhold recommendations of approval for the proposed cemetery. Because one page where your map of proposed comprehensive land plan shows this as future industrial. Understand that Judge Hanford lives immediately to the west on a multi-acre tract where, which is his family home place and that to the east is Mrs. Spears, who lives there in her home place and has lived there for some twenty or more years. In the last few days, we have been able, with three conversations, to come to an agreement, the Masjid has come to an agreement with Judge Hanford and Miss Spears, who are represented by Tom Terrell, land planning attorney at Fox Rothschild in Greensboro. And because of judicial prohibitions about what judges can do, I can say, and we have submitted it as a part of our package to the city earlier today or yesterday, that they have no opposition to the church's request based on the agreement that the Masjid has worked out with them. That agreement provides for zoning of the balance of the property at a future date to.
Could I, could I interject here something at this point in time, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Attorney.
It is inappropriate for Mr., for this private agreement between these parties to be talked about here in this, in this rezoning. The rezoning issue before you should not take into consideration any private agreement between parties of which the city is not a party to the agreement. You're, the zoning issue before you is straight up whether or not it is proper zoning and any sort of side agreement within which the city is not a party and you have no control over and no enforcement mechanism over is really not to be considered when you're taking this issue into consideration regarding rezoning the property.
Thank you for that clarification, Attorney Huffman.
I think, I understand Mr. Huffman's position, but I think the council is a public policy consideration in a legislative decision needs to understand that the neighbors immediately affected by this have no opposition. I think I can certainly represent that in absolute good faith, regardless of whether there is an agreement or not, but I am telling you that the basis of my statement is the agreement that has been signed by the Masjid and by the neighbors.
Let me, let me, let me ask the question there, Lawson. This is Bob.
Yes, sir.
You know, I mean, I certainly understand where you're coming from, but follow upon David's point, you know, we take it, we can't take it into consideration. And I trust what you're saying is that you can say what they've represented to you, but I don't want to get ahead of the game. Is Tom Terrell going to say effectively the same thing that, that the, that the Hanfords have no opposition to this zoning? I know I'm getting a little ahead of the game here, but with our.
We have submitted the agreement to the city staff and and to council, so you should have that as a part of your package that there is no opposition from either of those two immediate neighbors. And I think that's important in a legislative decision. Contrary to Mr. Huffman's point, I'm not arguing the legality of it, but I've been doing this forty-six years and this council, prior councils and councils in other jurisdictions that I do work in have encouraged applicants to work out the request and concerns of the neighbors. And so I'm representing to you that the concerns of the neighbor, immediate neighbors has been addressed. And I think it's critically important. And based on my experience with this council, y'all have deemed that to be critically important as well.
And I, I, I agree. I think that's true. I guess, I guess I'm just, you know, I don't, I don't want to get out of bounds here. I know you know where I'm coming from. You say you've been in the business a long time. I have too. So, and I, and I.
I, I, I appreciate that, Mr. Ward, and certainly as this is a legislative decision on your part, you're entitled to consider anything that you want to consider on the request, but I do think that the lack of opposition from the two immediate neighbors is something very important. And that we basically resolved in three, uh, three telephone conversations here in the last two weeks, so.
Let me just add, I, I think, I think it is critical that there is no opposition. I mean, I just, like I said, I, you know, just follow upon David's point, I just don't, you know, with respect to any kind of agreement, you know, we, you know, I know the other council members, it's sort of like restrictive covenant. We don't, we don't have any role as far as enforcement of that. I think we can sort of take it in the raw that there's no opposition to it. And that, that's the point I'm trying to make. So you, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Go ahead, go ahead with the presentation.
Thank you, Councilman, for summing it up in that way. So Lawson, if you could continue with your other points.
Sure. On page three, paragraph five of this agreement, the neighbors withdrawal of objection to rezoning request in consideration of the Masjid's assumption of the obligation set forth in this agreement, the neighbors will not communicate opposition to the rezoning. And I, I think that is what the agreement certainly states. Back to the T R C process that started last July. Staff finally agreed to the technical approval of the conditional zoning plan, and that's after whittling it down and slicing it down and whittling it down and slicing it down to what you have before you tonight, which the Masjid has agreed to, to get the technical review committee approval. It's taken, it took six months in the T R C review process on a one point three acre request. The applicant, in this case, submitted eight different drafts of the conditional zoning plan for the T R C review. Some were reviewed formally, some were reviewed informally. The applicant reviewed and implemented the changes pursuant to more than eighty T R C comments, eighty T R C comments. The applicant raised only two objections through the entire process, which objections were ultimately withdrawn. The applicant raised no objection to any T R C required or suggested revisions until the sixth draft, which was submitted following a seventy-five percent reduction in the plan footprint. And after having addressed sixty T R C comments prior. The sixth draft that you have before you drastically condensed the entire planned footprint within the established corporate city limits. And the city renewed its request that the balance of the subject property be annexed into the city, even though the E T J portion of the subject property is being untouched by this request. But again, the Masjid agreed because it understood staff's concern about a donut hole. We still maintain that the applicant had good cause to object to the annexation since it had taken plans to minimize its plan for the sake of the future land use plan. And in so doing, brought this one point three acres into the corporate limits. For such a low impact use, such a small area, such a simple, straightforward plan, the T R C process was arduous and unnecessarily cumbersome. But the applicant adhered to staff direction throughout this process that's been going on for almost a year. Throughout the process, staff made their objection to the proposed cemetery use abundantly clear on the basis of their view of the plan as inconsistent with the future land use plan for industrial development of the property. The redundancy of the T R C responses communicated to the applicant that the request was most unwelcome so as to dissuade the applicant from continuing further. Nevertheless, the applicant made substantial concessions and reductions to his plan at every opportunity to minimize the perceived impact on the proposed use on its environs. I think it's important to note that your land use plan, your future land use plan has many areas indicated as industrial, particularly light industrial. Again, the adjoining here are purely single-family residential and the Catholic Church across the street. We're only talking about one point three acres of a fifteen point five four acre tract, which is, in my estimation, unsuitable for industrial development based on the topography and the number of water and sewer easements that cross the property. So I think the church's request is very, very reasonable in that regard. It's my understanding that the city economic development department has targeted eleven areas for potential industrial use as targeted areas. This acreage is not in one of those targeted areas. It's simply shown on the future long use plan. Now I want us to talk about the reasonable land use that we are requesting here. It conforms to surrounding uses and reasonable uses under the future land use plan. Across the street is the M D R. Across the street is the Catholic Church. Across the street is M D R under the F L U P consistent with this land use and existing uses. The cemetery is proposed on the very edge of a future land use plan industrial area. A mere one point three acre blip on the map will not disrupt the planned industrial character of the area. If you, if you look at the dimensions on the future land use plan, you can see that the area of industrial is substantial. It is still an industrial zoning, so the zoning map will reflect that it is an industrial area. As I alluded to earlier, secondly, the property is woefully unsuitable for industrial development, even if combined with adjoining properties. It is odd shaped, a very odd shaped lot, as you can tell from the fifteen point five four acres. Nearly two and a half acres of the property is encumbered by utility lines that bisect the property both north and south and east and west. A stream, a stream which requires a hundred-foot buffer also bisects the property north to south. There is a fifty-foot fall from the northwestern property line with the Hansfords to the southeastern property line with the Cheeks. It could serve as useful open space, but the applicant's reduction of the footprint to one point three acres preserves the balance of the property for any potential future industrial use. Third, to date, no known progress on industrial development of the subject property or adjoining parcels. We know of no known discussion of interest or activity on the Hanford property, the Spears property, the Cheek property. No one has reached out to the applicant or to our knowledge or to the city or third party about selling or developing this property. There have been no overtures from the city or anyone else for an alternative resolution to the applicant's urgent need for a cemetery for its religious community. Fourth, the subject property is not good for much of anything, but has immense value to the masjid because the Alamance County Muslim community is in urgent need of a cemetery to bury and memorialize its deceased. I want to take just a few minutes to talk about Muslim cemeteries and land use regulation. Unfortunately, it's well documented in this country that the Muslim community, communities are facing challenges establishing cemeteries through local governments because of land use regulations. There's been considerable news coverage and legal analysis of this issue. We do not believe that the staff's objection is fueled by identity prejudice. We clearly believe that it boils down to the city's fervent desire to maintain an inventory of property seemingly suitable for future industrial development and to do everything in its power to protect that property from development in other forms. And we certainly believe that to be the case. I, again, do not believe the city's objection is rooted in religious or any other form of identity prejudice. At the same time, we are not in the business of telling our client how to feel, especially our client that is a leader in Alamance County Muslim community, which is informed and aware of the permitting and approval challenges that its counterparts have faced in a very real and prejudicial way in seeking to establish church cemeteries of their own. If Mr. Said's letter to the newspaper ruffled feathers, I would humbly ask you to put yourself in his shoes. Four to six months, four to six drafts of substantial resources into a plan review process that he has told that the Burlington staff will not recommend. Having just lost a prominent member and servant of his religious community and the community at large, Dr. Mohammed Bateh, who stated desire was to help the masjid establish a Muslim cemetery in Alamance County and to be buried there himself. And unfortunately, he died and was unable to be buried in this community. I think the council needs to take that into account in its legislative capacity in weighing the benefit to the community at large versus the singular desire of the city staff to abide by the future land use plan. I want to conclude my remarks, and then I'm going to allow Mr. Moffett to read a couple of letters from religious groups in this community that support this request. And also Sahir Shahid would like to speak directly to you as well. So in conclusion, the reasons to grant the request are pretty simple. It's a reasonable use of the land. It conforms to existing land uses. It joins MDR, a neighboring Catholic church. It conforms to the future land use plan for the immediate area as to fourteen of the 15.54 acres. It is extremely low impact, extremely low impact, quiet, low traffic, certainly wouldn't disrupt existing uses of surrounding properties. It is a miniscule intrusion into the future industrial area. It still borders suitable MDR areas as well as the, as shown on the long-range plan. Second, in addition to being a reasonable use of the land, it is, it serves the public purpose. There's an urgent need for the Muslim community. Alamance County is without a Muslim cemetery. Followers of Islam may only be buried in Muslim cemeteries. It sends a message of inclusivity. And I think that is a critical factor in the times in which we live. And I heard the praise of Chief Smythe, well, well-deserved, where he took a stance of inclusivity and training. And I think that this would be a step in the right direction and consistent with that admirable objective. Third, it is a terrible property for industrial development. The property cannot realistically accommodate an industrial development, even if assembled with adjoining property. Only is open space at its very best. For industrial development purpose, the property is much about like a useless table scrap. For the masjid, it is an answer to an urgent need. Notwithstanding the applicant's property rights, the applicant has acquiesced in the city at every turn during a protracted and costly process to make this proposable as acceptable and as minimally intrusive to the city's plans as it possibly could. And with that, I would conclude my remarks. I would emphasize that Mr. Huffman is available as the engineer if there are any questions that Shahid, Sahir, Ryan Moffett, or I cannot answer. And we greatly appreciate your time and attention to this matter and look forward to a favorable decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Lawson.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I'm just going to quickly read a couple of letters into the record. You may already have these, but I just, in case you don't, I want to make sure that they are on the record. I'm going to begin with a letter from Mr. Thomas Messick, whose address is 3420 South North Carolina Highway 87, Graham, North Carolina 27253. This letter is dated May the fourteenth, 2021, concerning the Burlington Masjid's request to use their land off of Hanford Road, Burlington, North Carolina for a cemetery. Tax identification number 131303. I am requesting the following comment to be read at the May eighteenth, 2021 Burlington City Council meeting because I cannot be present. Mayor Baltutis, Mayor Protem Hikes, and council members, I am a native of Alamance County, an evangelical minister, and a PhD candidate in Islamic studies. When I was growing up, our county represented the "normal," in quotations, ethnic diversity formerly found in many towns in the southern United States, being composed primarily of African-Americans, white Americans, and Hispanic Americans. After moving from the area and living a number of years in Wake County and overseas in a Muslim-majority country, I was surprised when I returned to find that the Burlington of today is not the same Burlington I remember. After serving in Burlington over the last four years, in the name of Jesus, I, along with a team of Christians from five local churches, have identified residents from Pakistan, Palestine, Yemen, Syria, Jordan, Iran, Turkey, India, Bangladesh, Kosovo, China, Laos, Korea, Mexico, Honduras, and El Salvador. Many people originating from these countries are Christians, Muslims, Sheiks, and Hindus. Not surprisingly, with such a diversity of people and religious backgrounds, there is also a diversity of cultural customs, including how people bury their deceased loved ones. I have personally known Imam Shahir Said at the Burlington Masjid for the last three years and have interacted with several of their congregants during this time. Many Muslims who attend the masjid are longtime professionals and business owners in our community. Imam Said and I have held multiple public discussions and presentations together in Burlington where we have sought to help Christians better understand Muslims and Muslims to better understand Christians. I have accompanied several churches to visit the masjid to observe Muslim religious practices, and each time, the masjid community has been very welcoming to our church groups. As a friend of Imam Said, I am confident to endorse his character and the importance of the masjid for serving the religious and cultural needs of the Burlington Muslim community. I do not presume to know everything that is involved in the masjid's request to use the land off of Hanford Road as a cemetery, nor all the laws regarding zoning and land use in Burlington. Such knowledge and decisions are entrusted to you all, under God, to ensure the best choices are made for the good of our community, whether that be for the sake of our economy or our residents. One thing that has become apparent as the result of the COVID pandemic is that human life and well-being is more important than money. Though economics certainly plays a vital role in the American good life, as you make your decision regarding the masjid's desire to use their land as a cemetery, I encourage you to consider how Burlington can and should accommodate, within the law, the cultural diversity of its residents. In this particular case, I encourage you to seriously consider how Burlington can best honor its residents, who are Muslims, by allowing a sacred place to bury their deceased according to their customs. Thomas B. Messick. And then I also have a letter from Father Paul Lineiger. He may be on the meeting. He attended the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, but also submitted a letter back in January to council and staff. And I just want to read that into the record as well. As pastor of the Blessed Sacrament Catholic Church located at 1620 Hanford Road, I have been requested to comment on the land use proposal submitted to the City Council of Burlington, NC, in regards to the parcel of land currently owned by the Burlington Maqaa Masjid. The Burlington Maqaa Masjid owns the land off of Hanford Road in short proximity to the church. The masjid is requesting a zoning permit to utilize their property for the establishment of a cemetery for the interment of members of their faith community. After serving the residents who currently own residential property within the circumference of the masjid's property, the landowners' community and Blessed Sacrament Catholic Church would rather see a cemetery use permit rather than any commercial industrial use. Any commercial industrial use will definitely negatively impact the surrounding property values as well as peaceful residential community environment. Commercial use of the property would likewise increase traffic on Hanford Road with potential safety uses, again negatively impacting the local residents and the congregation members of Blessed Sacrament. Having the peaceful, calm, and scenic landscape of a cemetery versus an industrial warehouse or plant is definitely preferred. It is important to note that there is already precedence for a cemetery within the city of Burlington limits. There's an already existing family cemetery adjacent to the Blessed Sacrament Catholic Church property and located within the Hanford Hills Residential Community. In conclusion, Blessed Sacrament Catholic Church located at 1620 Hanford Road, Burlington, North Carolina, is supportive of the Burlington Maqaa Masjid's request to use their property for a cemetery to serve the needs of their congregation. Pox Ed Bonham, Father Paul Lineiger, Pastor, Blessed Sacrament Catholic Church. Excuse me.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Ryan. Welcome, Shahir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members and other gentlemen attending. I just want to start, and hopefully I'm very clear in my voice, by thanking you all for your dedication to serve in the public. And I'm coming here to you with the hope of being able to enable you and enable myself and community to be better servants for our public. I just want to go through a brief summary of what Burlington Masjid and the Muslim community does and is doing in the Burlington area and surrounding area. First of all, we're no strangers to Burlington. We belong to here. We're a community consistent of migrants, people born here, people that converted to the faith of Islam during the many years. We are no difference. We don't claim to be any better or worse than anybody else in this community. The only thing that we love to be proud of is that we strive to be better servants and stewards of our community. The masjid members, way before the masjid was established, were known in the community as people that took the initiative to be and do for Burlington what any other person could have done. But that's not what I'm talking about here. Also, when the masjid came here, despite a negative reaction in the beginning, the masjid, with the help of the community in Burlington, made a positive impact in the whole community. We had brought in the free community clinic to the community that caters to those people who are marginalized, those people who are less able to afford regular health care. We did not hesitate to help those who needed supplies and foods. We provided a helping hand to those. We also helped with the other community members and groups deal with and provide for the needy school kids. I mean, I was reminded tonight by the talk about Chief Smythe of many of the things that the Muslim community done, and we really forget that we even done those things. We brought book bags, we stood with the kids, we did interfaith dialogue, and we're not doing anybody a favor we're doing there. This is our obligation as members of this community to this community. And we take pride in being active and reaching out for advice in everything that we do for our little community, from whether it is the city, the police department, or even the county level. We always went and seeked advice as part of this community. The Planning and Zoning Board, with, I mean, respected gentleman available here, can testify to say in my face many, many times, even before this final request for the cemetery. So we're not trying to force anybody's hand. We simply have a need, and we come into the city council, to the city of Burlington, seeking you to help us fulfill that need. During the process, like Mr. Brown illustrated, we were asked to make changes to our original plan. We were asked to make concessions. We were asking to scale down the project. And believe me, I did not hesitate for a second in saying yes to all of the above. It's not because we don't need it. It's because this is what it takes for a community to work together, is that we make concessions to each one another. I mean, the only thing I couldn't make a concession of, because until now, I'm still not understanding why a cemetery is contradictory in an industrial use. None of the conversation that we have with everyone from the planning zone to the city council to, I mean, everyone, everyone will give me the same thing. It's not a use that is allowed there. First of all, for a use to be prohibited somewhere needs to be stated that it's prohibited. If it is not, then there have to be reasons that are supported by evidence that show that this is why we're doing that. Haven't done that. Haven't seen that. I done search online, trying to find, what does it say? Maybe I'm overlooking this. So that is one thing through the whole process I've seen over and over without much explanation. It's just a cemetery doesn't go in there. Or I don't like to see a cemetery in an industrial zone, or a cemetery doesn't go in an industrial zone. If we look at the zoning, and you guys are the experts. none of them says there is a cemetery, and that's why the process of special zoning was put to bring the cemetery in there. My little brain says that that's the reason for the conditions put on the zoning, to make it acceptable in this thing. And the technical review made sure that they said everything that was needed, and we agreed to everything. Even some of the stuff that I still don't make too much sense of, like having one access to the street. I'm still trying to figure that one out, but I said, okay, that's fine. Let's just do it with one access point. The same thing, annexing a part that's not even involved in that. I said, okay, maybe that will help the city itself when we do that. So we said okay to that. And even dealing with the neighbors, we bent backwards to accommodate the neighbors because we don't want to offend anybody. We don't want to harm anybody. We want a Burlington that's very prosperous. We want a Burlington that is successful. I'm the first one to stand in line to promote Burlington, and this is my obligation as a citizen of this town. But I still do not understand why putting this tiny piece of land, that's going to be mostly nothing but greenery, no fanfare, no one coming there every day to visit and celebrate the death of somebody. It's just going to be a small, calm corner on this. Otherwise, until now, this will be the best-looking part in the whole area. And we do put in the tree buffers, the greenery, the access to the road. Believe me, this spot will be the best spot on Hanford Road to present to somebody coming and scouting Burlington for a future business. And add to that, tell them, by the way, we allow the Muslim community, who's a minority in this town, we allow them to have that burial place there and see how good they are keeping it. And I commit on behalf of all the Muslims that having that area there will be a positive addition to the city of Burlington. It'll be a much-needed addition to fulfilling the urgent needs of our Muslim community. And also to make things sound less selfish. We're not selfish as Muslims in this town. But I said this in conversation with some of the city officials, that as Muslims, we realize that burial is a high cost for everyone that lives here, that there is people in Burlington that cannot afford to be buried there. And I offered on behalf of the Muslim community that we dedicate even a part of this burial space that we have to bury those who cannot afford to be buried in a normal cemetery. And I mean, and I seek your advice, and I plead to you. What else can I do to make this proposal, one that you guys would say, yes, we stand with? I don't want you just to be approving it. I want you to be part of it. We're doing this for our community in here, whether it is the mayor, the city council, or the city officers. We all serve one purpose, and that is to present and serve our community. Presenting ourselves as open-minded, inclusive, accepting of all the others that exist. We'll have a big smudge on it when we tell the Muslim or any minority to that, yes, you're very welcome to live here, but we're sorry. Our city is so full and so pre-planned that we cannot afford to give you a place to be buried here. I'm in business of building bridges, and I think this will tear a big chunk of any bridge that you try to build to any group or industry that comes towards Burlington. I mean, I don't like to be emotional in that, but I really think, and this is my personal and humble way of thinking, that it will not hurt the market in Burlington as an industrial hub for any business to have a cemetery that is done in a non-invasive nature to those businesses or to those companies that are seeking to replicate or establish presence in our town. And if that happens, I'll be the first one to say no. But my opinion says it is not, and our community stands firm behind this. We invested the time. We invested the effort. We did everything that was asked from us with good faith. With good faith. When we went to the technical review board, we did everything with the hope of that point that they stuck on until the end, that will be removed. Because logic says that if I'm putting conditions on a zoning, my aim is to approve that zoning, to make it acceptable. Not that I ask you to make all those changes and still be stuck on only one point that I didn't make, ask you to make any changes to it. And unfortunately, we're requesting a space to be used for a cemetery. We cannot change that use. So kindly, humbly, I plead to all of you. Please look favorably at this. It's an urgent need of our community. And I think it is within your power to say that a cemetery on the edge of a future industrial use will not make this town less attractive, or will not contradict, or reduce the value of those properties that are there. And I will stop right here, and I have members of the community that are present in the attendance that would like to be allowed to speak when it is time for the public to introduce their remarks. I do thank you in advance, and I look forward to a positive decision from all of you. If anyone have any questions, I will try to answer them.
Thank you, Shaheer. At this point, I'll ask if there are any council questions before we begin the public hearing. All right, to Lawson, Ryan, and Shaheer, as per normal procedure, we'll allow you some additional time after the public hearing comments to address any questions that may come up.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much.
At this time, anyone who wishes to speak regarding this public hearing, this is your time. I already have two folks in queue, but for anyone else in attendance who wishes to speak on public hearing number one, we ask you to use the raise hand feature in Zoom or star nine if you're joining us via phone. And if you are having any technical or connection difficulties, John Vernon is standing by at 336-513-5440. And then again, once you do the raise hand or star nine, that will alert our staff, and they'll put you into the queue, and I will call your name when it is your turn to talk. So first on the public hearing list, we have Rabia. Rabia, if you want to unmute now, it's your turn.
Hi, Mayor. Can you guys hear me okay?
You can. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Rabia Sabiki. I am a native of Burlington, grew up at a school here, graduated from Carolina. I am family of five sisters and one brother, my father, Dr. Mohammed Amdid Bati, Mr. Lawson mentioned earlier on. And I just wanted to read a letter that we wrote in regards to the graveyard. Though I thought we would still have more time with my father, Dr. Mohammed Amdid Bati, in the last few months, I had come to realize that his days were numbered. He must have known this too, because for several weeks leading up to his passing, one thought, one stress lay heavy on his mind and his heart. When the time came, where would he be buried? He wanted his final resting place to be one of serenity, one with his fellow Muslims. He was so preoccupied by this that he would often call Mr. Shahar several times a day to check on the status of the permitting for a Muslim graveyard. He was so consumed that my mother would often notice and deepen thought, and when she would ask him what was on his mind, he would always wonder why the permitting was taking so long, worried that his time would come before things would be finalized. It turns out that he was right. Having a Muslim cemetery has been very important to my father for decades. He donated the land for the first Muslim cemetery in North Carolina over 30 years ago. And when people couldn't afford the cost of burial, he would dig graves with his bare hands in order to help lessen the burden of the cost for those families. When it became clear that the cemetery would soon run out of capacity, he immediately began looking for another location. With the help of Mr. Shahar and the rest of the Burlington Muslim community, they finally found that space last year. The permitting of a graveyard, a simple resting place, should never have taken this long. To him and the rest of us, we were unable to understand the controversy. Do not people of every faith deserve a dignified space to bury their loved ones? The fact that approval has taken so long meant that my father, a pillar in the medical community, an outstanding citizen of the Burlington community, and a volunteer for over 40 years, was unable to have his final wish fulfilled. The ways that my father gave to this community are too numerous to count. From his time as a physician, to providing free health care, to building bridges between faith communities, he dedicated his life to helping others. As a native Burlington, as a daughter of a mourning father who always gave to others, I ask that you please consider approving his final wish and grant this permit for a Muslim cemetery. While my father may not be able to rest there, I'm hopeful that future generations will find comfort in knowing that there is a dignified place to bury their loved ones here in Burlington. With sincerity and on behalf of the entire Bati family, thank you.
Thank you, Rabia. Next commenter, we have Ron Shive. Ron, if you'd like to unmute.
Thank you, Mayor Bartutis. My name is Ron Shive. I'm the senior pastor of the First Presbyterian Church in Burlington. I do want to commend you this evening as we honored Chief Smythe. We honored him for building a more inclusive community, a community of excellence, a community that was more representative of our community. And this evening, I'd like to ask you to live into that. And I think we have a great opportunity this evening to do that. I want you to imagine that if one of my good friends, a church member, Ralph Holt, who died two years ago, or Russell Wilson, he died two years ago today, had come to the Burlington City Council, or actually to the city, and said, I'd like to build a cemetery for the First Presbyterian Church of Burlington, North Carolina. And he was told, great, you need to get a conditional zoning. And he had gone through a process of 80 drafts, of adapting to 80 different changes from the technical review committee. And suddenly Ralph Holt, or Russell Wilson, was told, no, I'm sorry, we're not going to support that. I'll tell you what would have happened. Bob Lewis would have been chewing some ass. Bob Lewis is a good friend of mine. I talked to Bob today, and I do, Bob has talked to a few of you today. I will know this, that we as First Presbyterian people would have seen a different reaction to the city staff than what we've seen in reaction to the Maghrib. And I'm asking you to live into the best of our community tonight. We have an opportunity to be a better community. And I think you have the responsibility of doing that. And I really appeal to you to do that this evening on behalf of the better Burlington community. Let's be known for a community that welcomes and embraces everyone. That's my hope, and that's my prayer. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ron. If I could, just for the public record, and Rabia, I'll get you next. I just need your address, if you could state that.
My address is 532 Circle Drive, Burlington, North Carolina, 27215.
Thank you, Ron. Rabia, are you still with us, if you could say?
I'm still with, so I actually live in Atlanta, Georgia, but I've been living in Burlington since my father passed. The address here is 3210 Elk Street, Burlington, North Carolina, 27215.
Very good. Thank you. All right. At this time, if anyone else wishes to speak during this public comment period, we ask to choose the raise hand feature in your Zoom window, or star nine if you're joining us via phone. If you are having any technical or connection difficulties, John Vernon is standing by at 336-513-5440. While we're waiting for any additional comments, I will remind council that when we motion on the public hearing will be to continue to allow a 24-hour period per statute to receive additional written comments. All right. Last call for any additional comments. Please use the raise hand or star nine feature. All right. At this time, I'll recognize our city clerk, Beverly Smith, to include any written comments that were submitted.
Good evening. There were four comments received, all of which were provided to City Council, three of which were read this evening by the former commenters. All of the comments that we received will be included in the official record.
All right. Thank you, clerk. All right. At this time, I will recognize a motion from council to continue this hearing to receive additional public comments to a date certain.
Mr. Mayor, pursuant to NCGS 166A-19 Point 24E, I move that the public hearing be continued to June the 1st at 7:00 PM via Zoom for the sole purpose of allowing additional written comments to be submitted for a 24-hour period beyond the close of this meeting.
Very good. Motion to continue to June 1st at 7:00 PM at a regularly scheduled city council meeting made by council member Owen, seconded by council member Butler. This time, I'll ask Mr. Lawson Brown if that date represents any significant barrier for you, or if that is an acceptable date.
Mayor, that is an acceptable date, and we appreciate you setting it a time certain.
All right. We appreciate that feedback. Council, any questions regarding this motion to continue to June 1st at 7:00 PM? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raised.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed with votes from myself, Mayor Portem Hikes, and council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Again, this item has been continued now to the June 1st meeting. You'll have 24 hours to continue to submit written comments, which will then be considered at that next meeting, and a decision will be made following that. With that, Shaheer, Lawson, Ryan, we appreciate your work on this, and we look forward to seeing you again on June 1st.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we'll move on to item two on our public hearings. A public hearing has been set to consider an application to rezone from MDR Medium Density Residential to GB General Business District. The property is located at north of University Drive and Boone Station Drive at the intersection, and south of Rural Retreat Road, across from Josie Davidson Park. The property totals 13.82 acres in size. The address is 3802 Rural Retreat Road and is referenced as Alamance County Tax Identification Number 106912. To begin our public hearing, I'll recognize Director of Planning and Transportation, Mike Knott.
Good evening again, Mayor and council. You'll see on your screen and also on your packet these maps. The attached, excuse me, the hatched area here in blue is the parcel that's being requested for rezoning. This is the Alamance Crossing Development and the interstate with the Target and University Commons in this area. Also, the park, Joe Davidson Park is here across the street. Is to request to rezon 13.82 acres from Medium Density Residential to General Business. The property, as I mentioned, is on the north side of University Drive and Boone Station Drive, south of Rural Retreat Road. The comprehensive land use plan calls for the area to be regional commercial. That up as well. Here's the slide again. The park, regional commercial here. The proposed zoning is consistent with the land use plan and is compatible with the existing commercial and residential uses. Staff recommends approval with consistency statement sheet option one, shown in bold red that you have. The request was considered at the April 26 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, where it received a unanimous recommendation for approval. To date, no public comments have been received by staff. City staff also recommends approval of this request. I'll be glad to answer any questions, and we also have the applicant on the phone as well. I think Mr. Michael Nicely is on.
Very good. Thank you, Mike.
Hello. Can everyone hear me?
You're Michael. Welcome.
Hi. So, so again, just to repeat, we don't really have any kind of specific use at this point, but I think we're just trying to rezon it so it's compatible with what's going on in the area so that when the time comes, it'll be zoned more appropriately for the end development and use.
Very good. Any other comments, Michael?
No, that's all. It's just a longtime family property. There's recently a death of Cleo Smith, who's a longstanding resident of Burlington, who was one of the founders of St. Mark's Church. longstanding resident of Burlington, who was one of the founders of St. Mark's Church. And she recently passed at ninety-nine, and the three grandchildren are the owners, one of them being my wife. And so, so I'm working on their behalf to, to accomplish this rezoning.
All right. Mike Nun, if, this is a straight rezoning, is that correct?
That's correct. There are no conditions, straight rezoning.
Very good. All right. Michael, as I mentioned in a previous public hearing, if any questions are raised during comments, you'll have a chance to respond to those from council members. Council members, any questions for either Mike or Michael before we begin public hearing? Hearing none. This is public hearing for item number two on our agenda. If anyone wishes to speak regarding this item, we ask that use the raise hand feature in your Zoom window, or star nine if you're joining us via phone. If you are having any technical or connection difficulties, you can give John Vernon a call at three-three-six-five-one-three-five-four-four-zero. We'll take just a moment. Again, if you wish to speak on item two of our public hearings, please use the raise hand feature in your Zoom window, or star nine if you're joining us via phone. While we're waiting for comments, I'll recognize our city clerk Beverly Smith to see if we have any written comments.
And were no written comments received for this public hearing.
Very good. All right. Last call for any public comments regarding this one. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion from council to continue this item to a date certain. Previous one was continued to June first, so without objection, I think that would be a good date. So entertain a motion now.
Mayor, I'll again make a motion pursuant to NCGS, NCGS one sixty-six A dash nineteen point twenty-four E. I move that the public hearing be continued to June first at seven PM via Zoom for the purpose of allowing additional written comments to be submitted for a twenty-four hour period beyond the close of this meeting.
Motion to continue to June first at our seven PM regularly scheduled city council meeting made by council member Owen, seconded by Mayor Protem Hikes. At this time, I'll turn to Michael Neesley. Michael, does the June first date represent any serious challenge to your schedule?
No, I don't believe so. I'll make it a priority for sure.
Okay. Very good. All right. Council members, any questions regarding the motion to continue? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes myself, Mayor Protem Hikes, and council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. That concludes our public hearings, recognizing that we are, we do have some new business and some other items on the agenda, but we've been in session for about two hours. Unless our objections, we'll take a five-minute break for folks. We'll resume right about the top of the hour at nine o'clock. All right, everyone. Just another minute or two, and then we'll resume session.
Bob, you do indeed bring color to the screen.
Yeah, for sure.
All right. It looks like we've got all of our council members back. We'll go ahead and resume session. We are on new business item number three on our agenda. City council will consider a request from St. Mark's Church to hold an immersion baptism service service in the lake, in Lake K Mac at the Marina on August twenty-ninth, two thousand eleven, two thousand twenty-one. From three PM until seven PM contingent upon meeting all requirements of the special event permit application. This time, I'd like to recognize our Recreation and Parks Special Event Supervisor, Emily Crowley.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, city council. Thanks for having me out on the call tonight. This request is to host the annual immersion baptism with St. Mark's Church. They've been doing it for over thirteen years. They do have to get a special water use permit, and that will be taken care of following this meeting. The only difference in their application process this year is that we are going to have them go through the special event permitting process just to streamline things and make sure that all bases are covered from all divisions in the city. So I'm happy to answer any questions you all have.
Very good. Thank you, Emily. Any questions from council regarding this request? As mentioned, this is something we see each year, so I will entertain a motion from council.
No move.
Second.
Bob, we'll assume that's a motion to approve.
Correct.
Motion to approve by council member Ward, seconded by Mayor Protem Hikes. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes myself, Mayor Protem Hikes, and council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Thank you, Emily.
Thank you.
Next, we have two staff reports. We'll begin with our first staff report regarding the American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand twenty-one and a guidance update. This time, I'd like to recognize our lead for North Carolina F L, Luisa Schaller.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight to present with Peggy and Bob on the American Rescue Plan Act and the Treasury Guidance, the Treasury Guidance Updates you received on May tenth. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. I think I need access.
Scott, did we make sure Luisa's got?
Luisa, you already have co-hosts. You should be able to present.
There we go. I got it. Thanks for your patience.
Very good. We have that screen coming up now.
Okay, cool. All right. So as I said, Treasury released their guidance documents on May tenth as scheduled. And we're here to present an overview of what those documents entailed, and hopefully try to answer questions tonight as well. So the first thing, in addition to the guidance, was that all states and municipalities received a final confirmation of the total funds that they will be receiving. Remember that municipalities larger with populations larger than fifty thousand and above received their funding allocations based on a CDBG block grant formula. And so Burlington now has the confirmed allocation of amount of eleven million five hundred sixteen thousand dollars. Along with that final confirmation number, Treasury also released three documents, the interim final rule, an FAQ sheet, and and a fact sheet as well to all municipal staff members. It's public online. The definition of an interim final rule. Those rules are issued by federal agencies in order to expedite the regulatory process. So that means that the rule is in effect now. But there's, they skipped this public comment section beforehand, and are incorporating that and soliciting public comments and questions right now. So it is a final rule, but they are still open and accepting comments. So just need to, we need to preface what we're saying with they might take additional feedback from municipalities in the coming weeks and months. However, it is still final, and what they have written in the document is final. I'll transition over to Peggy, who's going to explain the process for receiving the funds.
So to begin with, council will have to pass a motion or a resolution to accept the ARP funds. After council is done, so city staff will establish logging on to the Treasury's website to establish the process to receive these funds. A special revenue fund will be, need to be established, and council will need to approve a budget for the special revenue fund. And that will be done once the council decides how they want to use these monies. Losses, we have learned that losses of revenue from the Water Resources Fund are not eligible now. Something else council should keep in mind is you do not have to obligate the funds until December thirty-one twenty-four. All the funds by that date must be obligated. Another interesting fact that showed up in this interim final document is that the funds may be used to cover costs incurred on March third, twenty twenty-one, or after. And this is for all the costs except for premium pay. Premium pay can, if council chose to do that, can go back before March third. But all the other expenses are expenses that are incurred March third or after. Okay.
All right. So with that, we'll move into a discussion, a brief overview of each of the four categories that you all are already familiar with. So I'll start off with category one, which is responding to the public emergency, public health emergency, or its negative economic impacts. This is kind of broken up into two sections in of itself. So as far as public health-related expenditures, Treasury has advised and determined that these funds can care for those impacted by the virus and also address health disparities exacerbated by the pandemic. And so that includes, that can include a bunch of initiatives relating to COVID- nineteen mitigation, prevention, medical expenses, expenses to improve the design and execution of health and public health programs. And that can include enhancement of healthcare capacity and capital investments in public facilities. They've also determined that you can invest in behavioral health by addressing funds towards mental health treatment, substance misuse treatment, crisis intervention, and service and outreach to promote access to those social services. They also have included support and payroll benefits to public health and safety staff, including those in the public health, healthcare, human services, public safety, and similar fields to the extent that they work on the COVID- nineteen response. So that's another population that you can address funds to, towards. In terms of addressing negative economic impacts, there are opportunities to transfer money towards households and individuals through cash, direct cash assistance, utilities, rent, or food assistance, providing job training, and also the provision of survivors' benefits for those impacted by coronavirus. You can set up a broad array of loans, grants, in-kind assistance, or counseling programs for small businesses and nonprofits. They ask you to keep in mind the tourism hospitality industries. However, if there are other similarly impacted industries in your area, you are free to direct funds to those as well. They have, they have determined that you can allocate funds to rebuild the public sector capacity by rehiring public sector staff and replenish unemployment insurance trust fund levels. And then finally, there are a bunch of initiatives set to target the hardest-hit communities. And so that's where the addressing health disparities pieces comes in. So they have a variety of funding opportunities for addressing the social determinants of health, investments in housing and in neighborhoods, addressing educational disparities through new or expanded early learning services, and then promoting healthy childhood environments with high-quality childcare and enhanced services for child welfare-involved families and foster youth. So there's quite a bit of leeway, and I didn't list everything in these categories either. But the hardest-hit communities piece, there is a presumption that you may use those funds if you're in a qualified census tract, which most of Burlington is, as well as most municipalities in the country. So that's primarily like a low-income area as designated by Department of Health. So that's important to keep in mind for those extra addressing health disparities pieces. So again, if
You go on there. I have a question on that last.
Yes.
You, the first slide said that we could not use the money for water resources revenue shortfalls. But we could supply households and individuals money for their water bills. Is that correct?
Yes, the loss of revenue, Kathy, that I was speaking of is looking at the Water and Sewer Fund as Water Resources Fund, and any lost revenue there is what the money cannot be used to reimburse versus the lost revenue that I'm gonna talk about in a little bit for the general fund. But yes, the money is available for helping water bills for the individuals.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
All right, Fiona, continue.
Okay. So again, the list is long. If you're looking at a program or initiative that is not on the list of items included in the Treasury Guidance, they just ask that you assess what additional uses would be eligible by identifying an effect of the coronavirus on public health and assess how how you're planning to use the funds would respond to or address identified need. So again, you have leeway to use the funds in other ways, but they ask that you go through that assisted process. There's also, moving on to category two, an opportunity to use the funds towards premium pay for essential workers. That can go up to $13 an hour for eligible workers performing essential work during the public health emergency. I'll move over to category three with Peggy again.
So I just wanna say, throw out everything that we've talked about previously at previous meetings. The we didn't know what the guidelines were gonna be, and they took a totally different spin. It only looks at gross revenue. The expense side is not considered at all. It looks at the reduction in revenue measured at four points in time, and instead of using our fiscal year in June 30th, it's looking at calendar years, 12 months ending December 31st, 2020, 12 months ending December 31st, 2021, and et cetera, 2022, December 31st, 2023. The base year is still our fiscal year 2018, 2019, or the year ended June 30th, 2019. And we have to calculate what I call a no pandemic projected revenue for each of those time periods. And that means we have to, they're saying pretend like the pandemic did not happen at all, and what revenue would we have gotten if there had been no pandemic? We are allowed to use a growth factor of 4.1 to the nth power, and the nth power is an exponent, and it gets into a lot of calculus logarithm types, equations that I won't bore you with the details tonight. But once we've calculated what our revenue would have been for that time period ending December 31, 2020, or 2021 and 2022 and 2023, we say, we calculate, we take what our actual revenue was and subtract that from what it should have been if there had been no pandemic based upon the Treasury Guidance calculation formula, and that's where, and the difference is our lost revenue. Based on some preliminary calculations for 2020 and how the nth power, that exponent increases, there's, I believe there is potential right now that if the council so chose to do so, that we could recognize all of the 11 and a half million as lost revenue.
Peggy, that was gonna be my question is, does this require us to look at overall revenue, or does it allow us to kind of drill down to individual revenue categories?
We're, we have to look at revenue in total. But we do have to exclude revenue, any pass-through revenue, any revenue grant, federal grants that we got, we have to exclude those. We have to exclude installment financing proceeds. Those aren't considered, so we have to take those. There are some individual line item revenue, line items we do have to exclude in this calculation.
Now Peggy, help me here. So you're basically saying that on the four-year period of 2021, 2022, 23, that based on preliminary calculations you've got now, and I follow you all the way to the 4.1%, but to the nth power is where I've lost you from calculus back in my junior, my junior year in high school. But basically, you're saying then that the projections that you see now on what our potential lost revenue would have been in those four years would equate to about the total amount of money we received. Is that correct?
Would equate to, because that nth power, it's like the 4.1% is a 4.1% growth. But then, but then it's increased over time. So that you would have more than four point, you might have 4.1% growth at June 30th of 20, but then six months later, it might be a little bit more than that. And then a whole year later, from December 31, 20 to December 31, the growth is gonna be even more. And so just rough estimates, you know, that's, and that's assuming because that we continue historically what our revenues, how our revenues have grown in the past. It could very easily equal that 11 and a half.
Peggy, your audio is cutting out. I'm gonna ask council members if if they feel like they missed anything or they want Peggy to repeat anything.
I think the the key piece that I got out of that is all the money is lost revenue if we so choose.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Now with that, so with that money then go into like the appropriated fund balance for whatever in the future? I mean, because we just, it just made us whole?
We have to set up a special revenue fund for those monies, and then depending upon which of the four categories council chooses to use that money for, we would set up budget expenses for those items. So can you go to the next slide, Louisa? So for instance, Louisa has already talked about premium pay. That's one item. There's the category one was reimbursement for COVID expense items. And anything but the premium pay or for expenses incurred March 3rd of this year, so March 3rd of 2021 going forward, we could get reimbursed for, but we would move the budget and those expenses into this special revenue fund that we'll set up. If council so chose to say that they want to use this lost revenue, allocate some of this lost revenue to government services, the what we're able to spend it on is a little bit broader than the other narrow field categories. For instance, we could do maintenance or pay-go funding building of infrastructure, including streets. So we all know that due to budget constraints, we have not put as much towards street paving every year that we would like to, and so council could choose to say, we're gonna use a chunk of this money to to save streets. We can use it to modernization of cybersecurity. You know, the Colonial Pipeline was just hacked. That is the constant item that Scott and I discuss, you know, making sure that we're trying to be as safe as we can, but any hardware, software, and critical infrastructure for that is applicable. Environmental remediation is eligible. Provision of police, fire, and other public safety services is eligible. We cannot use the monies to reduce property tax rate, payment of debt, nor to fund any pension plans or OPID trust. But under under the lost revenue category, you know, government services that we could spend are more broad.
Now Peggy, does that, that 4.1% growth rate that you had projected earlier, was that just in general fund or that include any, any enterprise funds?
No enterprise funds. The transportation fund got cares money directly. The and since I just primarily looked at the general fund, that's our biggest fund. We have the Water Resources Fund and General Fund are primary two main funds. And since we're not allowed to use loss of revenue in the Water Resources Fund, I've focused on this for tonight's presentation.
Peggy, anything else on category three?
No, sir.
Any other questions on category three from council? Peggy, on the the date of allocation, this one, since it's kind of a two-step, does does the formula look at the date that you declare it as lost revenue or the date that you allocate it to one of these categories you have listed on the screen?
The calculation gives us those four measurement dates. Okay, and so
The allocation to that category, does that make sense? Because it says funds have to be allocated or by 2024?
They have to be obligated, so we will have needed to decide, we will have had to issue P O's for whatever we, the council wants to spend it on, spend it on by December 31, 24.
And that would apply to the bullet points that you see here, not the calculation?
The calculation is kind of separate. Those are your, those four dates are your, where you calculate the lost revenue. And then council can, so we won't know until after December 31, 2023, how much lost revenue we will have for those 12 months. Now, we have seen a lot of comments on the interim finance final ruling that why didn't you use June 30th? Because most local governments municipalities are on a June 30th year-end date. So we're kind of hoping that may, the measurement states may change, but we don't know.
Okay.
Peggy, if I'm not mistaken, that these rules can can change in July, if I'm not mistaken, also with the final rules are put right forth by by the feds, is that I correct?
That's right. July 16th, we will get the final guidelines.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Otherwise, we'll move to category four.
Great.
Good evening. Category four includes water, sewer, and broadband. I'm gonna talk about water and sewer, and Rachel's gonna talk about broadband. Congress recognized that clean water and the provision of wastewater collection and treatment, including stormwater, plays a critical role in protecting public health. And the interim rules aligned eligible uses of the funds for water and sewer with projects that are eligible under the Clean Water Revolving Loan Fund and the Drinking Water Revolving Loan Fund, which is a program based on the on the Clean Water Act and the Safe Drinking Water Act, administered by EPA, and then the funds come from the federal government to the states, and the states issue revolving loans under that program. This money doesn't have to go through that state process. We get the money directly, but the projects have to meet those guidelines. Under the revolving loan funds, the projects are designed to fund projects that protect public health and safety through the through the environmental aspects of water and wastewater and stormwater. And they're intended to replace and rehabilitate existing infrastructure and not to provide for the expansion or future growth. Next slide, please. So on the sewer side, the Clean Water Revolving Loan Fund, eligible projects are aimed at improving water quality and reducing water pollution. Examples include constructing or improving and repairing wastewater plants or replacing and up, including replacing or upgrading the equipment or even upgrading treatment processes, but you can't use it for, to add plant capacity to treat higher flow, more flow. On the collection system, on the pipes in the ground, similarly, you can rehabilitate and replace lines and pump stations capacity expansion unless lines have a current or currently under capacity. Collection system extensions are possible, but only to serve areas with documented sewer system, septic system, or other onsite system failures through the local health department. Under the sewer revolving loan fund, water efficiency and conservation projects are eligible. So for an example, the automated meter system that we're embarking on is considered a water conservation and efficiency project. So that that type of project is eligible. Other possible projects are to control non-point sources of pollution for stormwater, but they must provide a, include a water quality benefit, so that has to be some sort of stormwater control measure that would that would improve water quality. Can also use these projects for, to improve infrastructure resilience during severe weather. An example, many years ago under Hurricane Fran, we had flooding at the East Plant, and through FEMA, we got a flood, we got money to build a flood wall to protect the plant. That type of project would be eligible under this this program. Also to create green infrastructure such as green roads and roofs and things like that, and projects that protect water bodies from pollution, including land purchase.
Regarding the the upgraded equipment and processes, but no capacity expansion, is there a way in the definition to, I would assume if we're gonna replace something like a pump, we would not necessarily replace it with the exact same size, would we be able to kind of split those costs of what a similar-sized pump would be versus what the larger one and the city pay a portion of that? Does that make sense?
I'm not sure about that. Typically, for that that example, we would probably replace the, a pump with a with a similar-sized pump. But that's certainly something that we could explore, whether you can kind of prorate that based on the replacing your existing size.
Because I know we are talking about future capacity needs down the road, and so if there's a way that we've got to replace something anyway, and it happens to get us additional capacity, can you craft that to allow the fund usage?
Yeah, that's something that we could explore. A lot of your capacity gain would be in in larger, you know, concrete structures, tankage, storage, and your overall treatment processes, but there is some some potential there.
And then you touched on it, but the collection system extension, I kind of wondered if septic systems, existing septic systems are infrastructure, they're just privately-owned infrastructure. And so what you're saying here is that that system has to have failed for these funds to be able to provide like a water line connection or sewer line connection to a residence or property?
Yeah, on the sewer side, it's it's related to the septic systems. There's a similar component under the water where drinking water wells need to be contaminated or failing, but that these revolving loan funds were, as I said, were were set up to replace existing infrastructure and not expand systems, so. But they do provide for that environmental benefit, whereas if you have an area of failing septic tanks that are contributing to water pollution, and that that's a documented issue, then you can projects that would extend sewer lines to replace and take those septic systems out of service would be eligible. pro, projects that would extend sewer lines to replace and take those, uh, septic systems out of service would be eligible.
Okay. Other council questions on those items? All right.
Um, on the water side, the drinking water, um, eligible projects, um, address serious risks to human and health, human health and ensure Clean Water Act compliance. Um, examples again are to construct, improve or repair water plants and replace equipment. Um, you can upgrade your, to a better, more efficient, uh, treatment process. But again, you can't add treatment capacity. Um, and the same with the water distribution system and the piping in the ground can rehabilitate, replace, um, refurbish pump stations, um, and that also includes meter replacement. But again, no, no additional capacity is, is eligible. Um, it does, uh, would include projects to replace lead service lines, um, under the, um, revised lead and copper rules that, that are forthcoming. We will have to do an inventory to try to identify, um, the material of, of all service lines, um, that we have out in the system, both the portion that the city maintains from the main to the meter and also on the customer side. So that, that's going to be a big effort. We're, we're not aware of any lead service lines, uh, unlike other parts of the country where there are, there are lots of issues, but we have to go through that, um, that inventory process and, um, um, projects that would replace lead service lines could be eligible for this funding. Um, and, and very, and very much encouraged by the, the ARP funding in fact. Um, and then new water extensions are only available, are only eligible to serve areas if there's documented well failure, well contamination. Um, in fact, there is specific language that, um, Congress set up that says, um, that the drinking water funds, revolving loan funds, uh, program is to avoid use of these funds to finance the expansion of any public water system in anticipation of future population growth. Um, it is eligible for source water development to, to, um, if, if you needed a new reservoir, that, that could be a, a project, but also, um, replacing raw water piping, uh, intakes, things of that nature. Um, again, if, existing infrastructure, um, or storage, um, you can add new, um, elevated or uh, ground storage tanks or replace, um, existing, uh, storage tanks to, to provide adequate storage and pressure.
So Bob, that paragraph would, would basically reference, you know, years ago to the residential community just west of McIntosh, would it not, in terms of their water issue?
Um, yeah, that would be a good example that that would be an eligible project, um, because the, the area, the, the subdivision was served with, with several, um, uh, community wells that had very terrible water quality and, um, and, and that, and that a program like that could extend public water to, to replace the well system.
Any other questions? All right, we can move on to the next with Rachel.
Yeah, I'll go over what we know at this point regarding, uh, the category for broadband infrastructure guidelines. Um, in the treasury guidance, they have defined underserved or unserved areas as those lacking access to a 25, three or greater wireline connection. Um, however, the specific service area that a community wants to address that is underserved or unserved, um, can be defined by the community itself. Um, new service constructed with these funds should be symmetrical, 100 by 100 or at least 100 by 200 with the ability to scale up to a symmetrical service. So they have outlined what's considered, um, inadequate broadband speeds and what's considered that, that ideal speed that they want to see constructed with these funds. Go on to the next.
If that broadband would be, um, part of the, the, the use of utilization of funds, would the state statute though, that actually would have to be a contract with the provider, would it not?
E- exactly. I've got that noted in a subsequent slide here that we, North Carolina does have some, some challenges there. So the guidelines do encourage us to consider the affordability of the, the broadband. Um, they would like us to avoid investing in areas that have agreements to provide that high-speed service in the near future. I think they, they say until 2024. And so we're not duplicating services or duplicating investments. Uh, they have asked to prioritize that last mile wireline connection, um, from, you know, into folks' homes. It's fiber to the home and to prioritize municipal, nonprofit and cooperative owned networks. Now, they haven't excluded us working with private ISPs, but, um, they have asked us to prioritize these, you know, nonprofit co-op and municipal. Of course, as you mentioned, Councilman Owen, North Carolina at this point in time doesn't allow new municipal run broadband. And we're still working through issues of even allowing us to lease city-owned assets to a third party based on current legislation. Of course, as you know, the League of Municipalities is working hard to, um, get legislation moving that would clarify what those regulations are and allow us to leverage infrastructure, um, put in by the city with ISP, third-party ISPs, because I don't think we've got any interest in running a municipal and broadband system, even if we were allowed to do so.
Okay.
You can go to the next one, Melissa. Thank you. I'm, so in addition to constructing the actual wireline fiber broadband systems, uh, they have also allowed this category for money to, uh, cover digital inclusion projects, which would include assistance directly to households to pay for broadband, um, providing devices and then including literacy training programs, um, so folks know how to use the devices and internet that, um, they have access to. I will note that the, um, National League of Cities has, uh, is, is in discussion with treasury and is looking for some additional guidance as well as asking for some technical corrections. They feel like that 25, three underserved area is probably too low. They think higher speeds are still considered underserved, um, in the environment we're currently working in where multiple people in a household need to access the internet at one time, um, especially to be able to participate in meetings like this one where audio, video needs to be transmitted. And so they are still working during this comment period to see if we can get some technical corrections. So as we've mentioned before, this is interim guidance that didn't get comment ahead of time. Um, they are taking comments until July 16th. Uh, so we may well see a little bit of change here in this broadband category if NLC is successful. And that's all I've got, uh, regarding the broadband from the guidance at this point.
Any other questions regarding broadband? Sorry.
Are there any questions about any of the other content we discussed?
No.
Cause that's the end of our presentation.
Any further questions from council?
I would, I just would like to add in, kind of in summing up, these are the additional guidelines that we've gotten. Council, uh, in the future will need to decide how they want to use these funds. We've got the four categories. We've, um, gone over what the limitations of each category are. And so, um, sometime in the future, we'll need to have a res, we'll bring to the council a resolution to accept the funds and then, um, we'll ha, need to set up a budget and, uh, set up a special revenue fund once council, uh, decides exactly what areas they would like to spend the monies on.
I, I have a quick question, Peggy. You, correct me, that, will like be a final rule on July the 15th? You know, this, we're operating on the interim, interim rules right now, right?
Yes, sir. Um, I, I think it's July 16th.
16th, okay.
Peggy, is there a date that we, that's recommended or that we should accept the funds by? And a date that you all as staff have started to identify to bring it to council?
No, um, the, a school of government in Chapel Hill has recommended that we, uh, that councils wait until that final guidance has been issued before, uh, deciding exactly uh, what they think they would like to spend them, um, where they would like to direct the monies to, what projects.
You said we could accept the funds in one action?
Yes.
Then allocate in different actions?
Then, then we would, once, um, you've had discussion and decided what to spend the money on, that, that's when I would recommend, uh, establishing a special revenue fund and creating the budget for that. The revenues would be the ARP monies and then the expenses would be the different projects that council wants to spend the monies on.
And that would be, that would be a special, uh, completely special funds that not tied to the, uh, general fund or, or the water and sewer funds, is that correct?
Correct. It's its own fund. It's, uh, 11 and a half million would be the total revenues and our total expenditures would be that, that 11 and a half million.
And those could be accepted prior to the recommended date of not allocating until June 16th, July 16th, correct?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
So you said school government is recommending that you not try to allocate?
Right.
Final guide.
Right.
The acceptance of funds can happen before that.
Sure.
Peggy, you're, is there a special reporting process that we have to, uh, provide information, um, to the treasury on how we're spending this money? Do we have to go through an audit process? What is, do we know what that looks like?
We do not accept all the guidance that we've seen thus far is that you need to make sure you justify in accordance with the guideline, uh, rules, uh, how you spent the money and you need to have the money in a separate fund and you need to make sure that you have all the documentation supporting, um, what you spent the money for and why, and how it is justified based on their rules.
And I, I think Jim, that that, some of that information is coming forth later in the year. Uh, and, and, but, but I don't know Peggy though, is, is this, is that going to be annual reports? It has to be done on a, on a calendar year or, uh, have, have they even, uh, approached that issue yet?
I don't believe they have approached that issue yet. Um, of course, uh, if let's say council accepted, chose to have a resolution in June to accept the funds, um, then we could prepare that for you. That doesn't mean we would draw down the funds yet. We could accept the funds and then, um, if we got, if we chose to accept or draw down the first half, because we know how we're going to spend that first half, then in next year's June 30th, 21 audit, our current auditors would be auditing that as part of the, uh, yellow book and the, uh, single audit rules.
If, if you accepted the funds, I mean, and I don't know how they would allocate those funds on an annual basis or whatever, but could you then invest those for, funds and, and, and for, uh, you know, uh, obviously it wouldn't be a strong interest rate, but how, how could you draw any interest on those funds?
We could, but it would be, um, minimal.
Right. Yeah, okay.
There are, those funds are supposed to be allocated in two tranches.
Yes.
Yeah. Dates on those two tranches?
Yes.
Yeah.
What are the dates of those tranches?
Well, the first one was supposed to be in May 11th, but we were supposed to get the money. However, uh, we haven't seen it in our bank account and that's because we have to, uh, council has to have an action to accept the funds. And then we have to go through the, uh, treasury wa, website and establish the proper connections.
Okay. So council members would, would you all like to see a recommendation from staff to accept the first tranche of funds at our next June 1st meeting or a different meeting?
Mayor, let me ask Peggy, what would be, what would be most convenient for, or how, how would it work out for finance to do this? In terms of outlet, which she had set up in terms of special fines?
Um, I think I would prefer that we, uh, wait until July 1st so that, um, we finish this year in and it's much cleaner for next year. And in July, we can have action, then we can go on and accept the funds and-
Makes sense.
Um, yeah, move forward that way.
Yeah, that makes sense.
All right, so we'll expect to see this back in our July, early July council meeting?
Yes. Well, I think, um, Beverly can correct me, but I think there's just a middle, one meeting in July. I think it's like around the middle of the 15th or something.
Yeah, it looks like there's a 20th, Beverly?
That's correct. Yes.
We'll get a report on this probably on the 19th at our work session and then have a action item on it on the 20th council meeting.
And we will have the final guidelines at that time, or we should have.
Yeah. Yeah, you should, just before the end, really. Yeah.
Yep. Speed reading.
Yes.
I'm just thinking that, um, we'll need to have a lot of discussion about this. But as we went through the four categories, it, what sounded at first like a lot of money suddenly dwindled um, because of the number of things that we could use or need and, and how much money that we're talking about. So I'm going to have to be more realistic in my dreams that I've been having about this.
Yes, ma'am.
One of, one of the topics that was broached at a, a league meeting today was, you know, the, for example, the hospitality issue, uh, with restaurants and, and I know, I think at the federal level, they're struggling with guidelines in terms of, of a, of an application process and, and how you define and make those determinations in terms of allocating funds to some small businesses. So I, I think that's still an issue that being, um, uh, taking a hard look at, how do you fairly do that, uh, in various communities? Uh, and that's why I think those July 16th guidelines, uh, they even be more important to us.
Any further council questions or comments?
No, I, I'd also think we need to be thinking about, um, the hardest hit people in COVID were, um, 27217. And I think we really need to pay attention to that area as we think about the way we want to proceed with this. Because I'm not exactly, exactly sure what that would look like, but, um, access to healthcare comes to mind. Um, and that was mentioned as in the guidelines. I, I, I'd like us to be thinking about what that might look like. We did something like that.
And Peggy, I think you, you guys mentioned that, um, some of the things that we've sort of put on hold that would be pay as you go projects like, like street pavings that would benefit, you know, the entire city through those endeavors, that, that would be eligible?
Yes, sir. For the law, if you chose to allocate some of the, um, monies as lost revenue purposes, then you're eligible to, um, use that for street paving. And since we have had requests for a million and a half for, of, for street paving for several years and we've only funded 900,000 because of the budget constraints and trying to get a balanced budget, we could use some of the monies to add to what we have currently proposed and, and kind of do a little bit of catch-up if possible.
Yeah, and that's, that's an important piece because we, we have some postponed liability there because that's not going away. We, that, 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 that is similar to what, uh, Bob Patterson experiences on the water and sewer side. If we don't keep our infrastructure up to date, you pay for it later at a much greater rate than, than, uh, so I would definitely like to see, um, staff take a good, hard look at that, what it would take to catch us up. And certainly that's going to benefit, um, a benefit to everybody.
I, I'd sure like to see that myself. As a matter of fact, I'm an advocate for that. And several years ago, we did a study and we just, the formula was, you know, what, how much we had to do each year to sort of stay even with the board or close as we can. And I, I just joined in to say, I, I really hope we can take a hard look at that and sort of get a little more money for that. Because I, I agree with Jim. I don't, we don't want to get behind. We did many years ago.
Right.
And, and we had to do, as I recall, we had to do a bond issue to play catch-up. I, I think, I think it's, I think it's our responsibility to make sure we stay even because everybody uses streets every day.
That's right.
And that, that's one fundamental infrastructure we need to look at. And that, that's one fundamental infrastructure we need to look after. So that's my two cents on it.
And you could take that and, and basically with, with the survey, you can look at different portions of the city too. I mean, you could really divide, you know, spread it out across the city. But absolutely.
I'm really curious to see how the N C fiber act kind of moves forward because obviously the, the restrictions currently are, are kind of tight for communities like us in North Carolina without a lot of providers in the community offering that level of service. But curious to see kind of how those interplay together as they move through the legislature. Any other council questions or comments on this? Obviously, this will be a continuing discussion for us in future meetings. All right. With that, we'll move on to the next staff report, which is regarding boards and commissions application update. At this time, we'll recognize our community, community engagement manager, Morgan Lassiter.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, John and I come before you to talk a little bit about the status of our boards and commission applications. As you know, we begin those recruitment processes early in the year and it's an opportunity for us to talk about kind of where we are right now. We'll be accepting applications through May twenty-eighth and we always have a little bit of wiggle room there at the end where we can kind of make sure we're getting those applications in. So currently we have thirty total vacancies over the twelve boards and commissions. Thirteen of the residents that are currently serving have applied for reappointments. So that is leaving about seventeen vacancies. If council so chooses to reappoint those thirteen members that have applied for reappointment. So that's leaving us about sixteen new applicants. And I wanted to go over a little bit, John, did you pop up too? Yeah. What's our total number of applications? I think I'm kind of messed up in my notes here.
Total number of applications, including the new applicants is twenty, the reappointments is twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, yeah. So thirty total vacancies with twenty-nine applications right now. So we just come before you tonight to kind of talk about what we, we'd like to see the public help us fill those and, and council to assist as they may too. So currently we've done some advertisements in our local paper. Of course, our social media across Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, Nextdoor, City Works Publications website. We've reached out to some partner organizations like the United Way, Chamber of Commerce, et cetera, to be included in their blogs and newsletters and emailed some of the applicants from our community police advisory team that were not appointed to just kind of let them know about some other opportunities here in the city, as well as our police and fire academies and some of our volunteers that are currently registered with our police department. So we're currently just seeking an opportunity just to talk in front of the public this evening and encourage folks to go and apply. We've got the application online. So if you go to the homepage of the city of Burlington's website, you can click right there on the graphic. It takes you to our online application. So if council has any thoughts or questions for us, we'd love to hear it. This is probably really just a commercial for us to have an opportunity to encourage folks to come and apply with us to serve. But John and I are here to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions from council? All right. We'll definitely encourage folks through all means to get online and submit their applications by May twenty-eighth.
I have a quick question, Mayor. Morgan, do we have many from a carryover from the CPAT appointment process? Do we have some of those folks that's applying or?
We did not have a high response rate from that. No, we did not.
Okay. And I know at the time we, we'd given some thought, maybe probably they were not appointed that, you know, there could be, that would be a recruit, a pool, we could recruit people for other boards and commissions. So
Yes, sir.
I was, I was curious as to whether or not, you know, their, their names were showing up, but apparently they're, they're not, no, not showing up in droves anyway, are they?
Yeah, right. Right. We did one round of communications with those folks that we were talking with, with CPAT. When it's, we know, we have that robust system built out of contact information. So that's an easy way for us to reach back out to them and maybe remind them of the application period.
Okay, that, that, that may be good, you know, I just, the thought occurred to me that because it was, it was, it was a bunch there that was not selected.
Yes. Great, great idea. Thank you.
A lot of really impressive people. You know, not selected too. I mean, because of just all the good applicants.
We did.
Any other questions on this one? That will conclude our regular agenda and this will begin our public comment period for the evening, which is public comments will be accepted for any items not on the agenda. So if you are still with us and are interested in issuing a public comment regarding an item not on the agenda this evening, now is your opportunity. We ask you to use the raise hand feature in your Zoom window or star nine if you're joining us via phone. John Vernon is still sticking around to answer any questions that you might have if you're having technical difficulties. His number is three, three, six, five, one, three, five, four, four, zero. Again, this is public comment period if anyone else wishes to speak. This time we'll recognize our city clerk to see if we had any written public general comments.
There were no written comments received.
Very good. All right. Last call for any comments. Please raise hand or star nine. All right. Seeing no comments, we will continue to move on to city council comments.
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment. I know we're running long, but I really want to take a brief moment and just say thank you and to commend our city staff. You know, tonight we heard a controversial conditional rezoning and conditional rezonings are sometimes easy. And in, in my tenure, I've seen them sometimes be easy and sometimes be very difficult or very complicated. And I just want to commend city staff on their work on the Hamford Road Cemetery project. Mostly for really taking the heat for us, I think, in, in some regards. There's no need to blame city staff. We've got a land use policy, a future land use policy, and we have a unified development ordinance that elected body put in place and staff simply doing their job and operating under the adoption of those plans and as well as the U D O. And, and they really work with petitioners to get a project that would be favorable for approval. And for those making comments that might, would assume or insinuate that people by a different name would be treated differently. I just find that kind of an uneducated comment in the fact that our policies are very well-written, very well-stated, and it is this council's prerogative to deviate from that. But city staff is working tirelessly on behalf of everybody out there. Do we get it perfect? Absolutely not. But in my tenure, I can tell you that they get it right more times than they get it wrong. And for all items that come before us, I don't want them to take the blunt for that as they're, they're, you know, merely doing their job. And I want to defend them more than anything and tell them thank you for the work that they do on these types of activities. And if Bob Lewis is going to do any astute and I just soon it'd be mine, I don't want it to be city staff's and I think I can handle it.
Thank you, council member. I appreciate those comments.
I second that.
Well, the other thing too is, is, you know, I, tonight it, it's the first time in a while I've heard, I think some of our staff's integrity being questioned in, in some small way by, by some, some, some very prominent residents. And I'm not, the one thing you can say about that group of people is they have to make tough decisions. And I really don't believe that their personal opinions or any type of things like that get in the way of them making a recommendation based on, on the land use plan. So they're put in a very difficult position and they have to make some tough decisions and we all need to realize that.
Any further council comments?
I have a brief comment. I, I just want to follow it briefly. Staff is doing precisely what they're charged with doing.
Amen.
And that's, that's what we expect of them. They're, they're, they're not a political body, you know, when it gets political, that, that comes to us, you know, but up to that point, they do, you know, they take the books, they read the regs and they make the recommendations based on that. And I just want to join in. I want to thank them, you know, because I don't, I don't know, having been there, I, I know. I'm, I'm, that's a little, I don't know, that's a concern of mine that I don't want them taking the heat either. You know, they're doing their job and we support them.
And I'd like to add in, especially on a cemetery, there's basically no more permanent use than a cemetery, which is why we have it as a only council-approved item.
That's a good point. Them cemeteries are forever.
Yeah. You can't move them, but there are some horror stories about moving them, including ones that have happened in our own backyard. And I think our goal would be to be as respectful to the dignity of the humans who call our community home in their eternal resting place. So to make the best decision for our city in the long term.
Just want to say, really appreciate your comments. Thank you.
I want to echo that as well. Thank, thank you all for, for sharing that. We'll make sure that the planning staff are not on the call. Get, get to know that you said these, made these remarks this evening. Thank you.
And to add to that, you know, the, the amount of time the staff has put into this, I, I can't even imagine the manpower hours when they certainly had other demands at, at their feet at the same time. So you know, again, we appreciate what you all have done. Thank you.
I believe, are there any further council comments on that or manager?
If council's through, just also wanted to acknowledge Eric Kearns, who has stayed with us for four, three hours tonight. Eric, I don't know if you can, if you have your video eligible. Want to acknowledge Eric for, for joining in. He is, as you all know, council members know, he's agreed to serve as our interim police chief beginning May twenty-seventh. And we just wanted to acknowledge that he stuck it out for three hours tonight. So.
He may have changed his mind after tonight.
I'm still with you. We're good.
Glad to have you with us, Eric.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Unless I hear other comments or from council or the manager, it's my understanding that the attorney has requested a closed session.
Mayor, I would ask that you move second and vote to go into a closed Zoom session at this time pursuant to North County General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen eleven, paragraph four and North County General Statute one sixty-six A dash nineteen point two four G to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the city, including potential economic development incentives that may be offered by the city council in negotiations.
No move.
Second.
Motion to enter closed session made by council member Ward, second by council member Butler. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Portem Hikes and council members Ward, Butler and Owen. Council members will now depart this Zoom call to join a closed session. We will return to this exact Zoom call to conclude our meeting this evening.
Okay, so we hit the leave button, then, then follow the instructions, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So don't happen to see you, you know, in the second session here. Y'all have a good week. Okay? Thanks.
All right, we've got council members filtering back in.
Yes, sir. Just bringing everybody in. I'll hold one second.
Okay.
I'm hearing voice.
Okay, I'm in.
I am, very good.
Nothing short of remarkable. David, how you doing?
Look, nobody's here. Nobody helped me.
Yeah. Well, they studying the magic, aren't they? You know?
Oh mercy.
Beverly and Kathy get the prize for being the first ones in the meeting, right?
There are new IT specialists there, right there, yeah?
We're just good at what we do.
All right, let's see. Harold, can you get your video up?
No, my screen says that we cannot start your video because the host has stopped it.
Okay, see if Scott can.
You just hit it nine times, it'll eventually come up.
Let me try hit okay here. That'll take me back to the original deal, so I'm just gonna talk to you, okay?
That'd be good.
Forum, so, all right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
All those in favor of the motion to adjourn, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed with votes myself, Mayor Portem Hikes, council members Ward Butler and Owen. Thank you for joining us this evening. Please have a wonderful rest of your evening. Take care.
Good night, everybody. Have a good evening, Harold.